Okay, I'd like to call to order the June 3rd, 2019, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger, and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Simaresti?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Gowan?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Here.
Mr. Roslevich?
Mr. Whiten?
Oh, sorry. Mr. Woodward?
Here.
The secretary was out.
Okay, and if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag's over here to my right by the podium.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Linda, do we have any additional communications? Or any communications? There's nothing on there.
Well, there was one email that came through today. I'll be putting it on the agenda.
It'll be on the next agenda. Okay, great.
Oh, I did want to announce that the petitions for school board members are available now. The county clerk, County Board of Election is managing it, so if anyone is interested, they can go to the County Board of Elections office to get a copy. We do have some in our office also.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so number six and seven on the agenda are just corrections to the minutes of the April 29th, 2019, meeting and the May 13th, 2019, meeting. We won't vote on those until the next meeting. Does anybody have any questions about any of those? No? And then same for number eight. Number eight is the approval of the minutes from the April 15th, 2019, meeting and the April 29th, 2019, meeting. So, we will vote on those at the next meeting, which will be, what, on June 10th, a week from today. Okay, that brings us to our student representative report. Good evening, students, for your second-to-last meeting. Isn't that so crazy? It goes so fast, doesn't it?
It did not feel like a year. So, for Irving, the pre-K field day was the 31st, and it was also the Career and Spirit Day at Irving. And this Wednesday is Dinner with the Birds event, although a sign-up is required. And there will be a first-grade walk to Bartle this Thursday. As for Bartle, last Wednesday was the Bartle Award Ceremony. Last Friday was also Bartle Run for Fun, and it seems to be going on every Friday this month, except for the half-day. Tomorrow, there's a Bartle Student Congress meeting. The Bartle Spring Concert is Thursday, and the Spring Music Assembly is this Friday. And as for middle school, next Wednesday's the eighth-grade trip to Dorney, and next Thursday's the eighth-grade dance.
So, there are several updates from the high school as the year comes to a close. School was closed on Monday for Memorial Day. Last Tuesday, the National Honor Society welcomed in its new members during the annual NHS induction ceremony. On the 30th, there was a candidates forum in the high school to hear and ask questions of the mayoral candidates, so remember to vote tomorrow. There was also the Science Fair on the 30th, where students displayed their science projects and experiments to other students from the middle and Bartle schools. Thank you so much to everyone who participated. The senior class went on senior trips last Thursday and Friday to a boat cruise and to Dorney Park. Thank you to Ms. Harper and all the class advisors and officers for planning this event. Richard Blanco, a visiting speaker, visited the high school on Sunday. Also, senior awards are tomorrow at 7:00 PM, or it should be 6:30, in the high school. And finally, NHS is going to Irving for a reading event on Wednesday.
Awesome. I love those inter-school events. Okay, thank you both so much. Anybody have any questions for the students? No? One thing I'll say, just based on all of the events that these guys are reading off, we will all have to put our heads together and figure out who's going to be able to attend what events over the next few weeks as we lead up to the end of the year, because there's lots of fabulous things that we want to be able to attend and show our support.
Yes, these are all wonderful events, and looking forward to attending as many as I can. Prom and pre-prom, is that, that's coming up, right?
Friday, right?
Thursday.
Oh, Thursday? Prom is Thursday? Oh, all right.
Let's pray for good weather.
All right. How's it looking so far?
Mr. Laster says he has a thumbs.
It's looking good? All right.
I don't recall ever as super.
Don't, don't say it out loud. Don't.
Just say it.
I stopped him. It's good, we're good. Don't worry, it wasn't, it didn't get out of. Okay, moving on. We're going, we're going, we're going to move on now to the superintendent's report.
So, I just want to add that next week, we'll introduce formally, the two reps will be taking over for Avery and Zaiu. They will be Stella Draper and Andy Lamb. More formal introductions next week, they'll sit in for the first probably half of the meeting, so they can see how you operate and how they function. So, we're very excited about that. So, I do have quite a few numbers of things to share with everybody on my report. It's all, it's all, I think, good stuff. The very first thing I'd like to do is honor a student who is receiving a very special recognition. I would like to introduce Aleema Zimmer, who's one of our support personnel at the high school, to the podium, who's going to talk about this honor, and then I'm going to invite Cindy and her family to come on up to the podium, too.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Aleema Zimmer. I'm the National Northeast Division Assistant Vice President for the Marine Corps League Auxiliary, and I'm here this evening to present to Cindy Bieberman the Chapel of Four Chaplains Award, the Legion of Honor Award. Before I give this award, we are honored this evening to also have a recipient in our audience, Mr. Michael Laster, our principal from Highland Park High School, was a recipient a few years ago. And we also have Angie Harper, as well as Susan Doocy. Over the past few years, they have been given this award, so very pleased. All right. Before I present this award, I'd like to explain whom this award, I'm sorry, is given to in memorial. There were four chaplains aboard the USS Dorchester. That was a transport ship that was in World War II. They were transporting soldiers back to the United States. The boat was struck by a U-boat, and it was sinking very quickly. There were thousands of soldiers and sailors aboard this ship, and there were four chaplains. One was a priest, two were Protestant ministers, and another one was a rabbi. As opposed to saving themselves, they were concerned about their fellow man, so they donated there, they gave their life jackets, and stayed aboard the ship as the ship sank. So, this is what this memorial is for, award. I'd like Cindy Bieberman, please, to step forward. Cindy is a very exceptional individual. Her achievements include volunteering at the Aldrich Gate Crisis Center food bank about which is located in East Brunswick, New Jersey. She's also volunteering to assist the flood and hurricane victims located in New Orleans as part of the Habitat for Humanity missions, the Patan Rouge Emergency Habitat for Humanity Mission, and Project Green Light in New Orleans. She also worked with individuals with disabilities in a factory located in Israel. Cindy is very active with the Highland Park National Night Out Program sponsored by the Highland Park Police Department. Cindy is also a member of various student organizations, inclusive of the Highland Park High School Varsity Women's Soccer Team, the Drama Club, the Jewish Student Union, as well as the National Honor Society. Cindy, right now, we also have an award that was given, presented to you by the Board of Education, and we have Dr. Taylor, if you'd like to comment a little bit on it, all right? Okay. I also have an award that is given through the Chapel of Four Chaplains. This chapel is located in the Philadelphia Naval Yard in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. And Cindy, this is what this award is saying, "In recognition to your lifetime service to all people regardless of race or faith, this award symbolizes for all Americans and for all time the unity of this nation founded upon the fatherhood of one God." And congratulations. We also have a pin. We also have a pin indicating, representing all faith. You can have that. I'm going to get my camera. Okay. Thank you. Yes. I'm going to get my camera.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll get mine. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Mine is off. And I'll just turn it off completely. I thought you were going to wear it. It's a nice picture.
I'm not going to sit for too long, because I would.
Thank you, Avery. What I would now like to do is introduce one of our supervisors, Ms. Jennifer Knapp, who was instrumental in supporting one of our rock star high school teachers, Ms. Nicole Krupsky. A lot of us know Ms. Krupsky. So, I'd like Jen to come to the podium, say a few words, and then I'll show a short video clip before we actually bring you and the family up for pictures.
Hi, everyone. So, I'm very excited to be here to honor Nicole. When this award came out, I immediately reached out to her and asked her, I was like, "Would you mind if I nominate you for this award?" Because she is so deserving. I'm going to read the nomination that I wrote, and then we're going to show the short video that she created as part of her submission for the award, and we are super proud of her for receiving this award. She deserves it. She's been teaching the Read 180 program for years and has done wonderful things with our students, so we're very proud of her. It is with great enthusiasm that I write this nomination in support of Nicole Krupsky receiving the Read 180 award. Mrs. Krupsky is an exceptional Read 180 teacher at the high school. Highland Park High School is a Title I school serving a diverse student population. Mrs. Krupsky plans and executes lessons that draw upon the high school's diverse student backgrounds, interests, and developmental learning goals. I have observed firsthand how she has developed and implemented strategies to meet the needs of different learners and be responsive to the differing circumstances in which they each live. Every child is important to Nicole, and as a teacher leader, she makes every effort to model for her colleagues how to support students and their families, so every student can succeed socially and academically in the school environment. Mrs. Krupsky's goal is for all students to succeed and reach their potential, and it is evident in the data that her students rise to her expectations. Nicole has always exhibited the qualities of leadership, and it is evident that she possesses the intellectual and social skills necessary for effective leadership. She has happily taken on the unofficial role of the Read 180 teacher leader. Nicole serves as an instructional leader for her colleagues by regularly providing professional learning opportunities and coaching for the Read 180 program. Nicole has an easygoing personal style that does not threaten her colleagues, but instead helps bring people together. She is organized, sets clear expectations, communicates effectively, and is always approachable. Nicole Krupsky is an outstanding educator who exemplifies the best the profession has to offer. She is an exceptional educator who has a deep knowledge of educational practices. I'm thrilled to recommend her to receive the Read 180 award. And now, we're going to show her amazing video that she did for the award.
I've been a Read 180 educator for over a decade, and I really believe in the program. It helps kids realize that they have an anchor in the building, that there is a place that they can go for help, that learning is not this magical thing that other people have figured out and they just weren't told the secret, that they can achieve. So, at first, like, my attitude, it was so bad, and then when Ms. Krupsky, she actually sat down with me, then my whole mentality changed, and now I'm on 12th grade reading level. So, thanks to her, I went from here to here. I've seen tremendous growth. This infusion of technology and this different kind of skill base has really helped kids flourish even more than what I had hoped it would do. She makes you feel like you belong, and she, like, knows how to make work fun. I never liked reading. I hated reading, but now, like, I can sit down and actually read a book. I try very hard to make this room a place that they want to be. If they have struggled through their whole educational career until they get to me, school is not a fun place for them, and the only way to break that cycle is to be a different kind of classroom. I feel like in this classroom, I could just be myself, because it's very, like, welcoming. I'm always happy when I walk in here. It just feels good to walk in here, and I feel like you are home.
He's funny, she's caring, and she's a good person to talk to when you have problems.
Kindness is key, and always try your best. That's my family motto, and that is what I try and instill in these kids. Be kind, try your best.
She really cares about her students personally, and I love her. Read 180, and Ms. Krupsky together, it's like the perfect combo.
And since that moment that we brought Read 180 to the district, it is a tremendous click for me, like, this is my calling. This is what I need to be doing.
Congratulations. Ms. Krupsky, why don't you come up? And I have a certificate on behalf of the board and the school district, so you can frame that, put it up there. You've got a little something. And how about the family come up? I'd love to have a picture for all of us, so I can put a news blurb together of Sidney and Ms. Krupsky. Come on in. Oh, yes, I you, if you could help out, too. That was a John Zoom production, by the way. Thank you. I'll have my phone back. So, at this time, those guests who were honored are welcome to leave or stay. I think that's the right move. It's a busy time of the year. Speaking of rock stars.
Good night, thank you so much for coming.
I do want to call out my leadership team. The team I have been able to put together and I inherited over the last three, four years has just been fantastic. These guys are my rock, they're my go-tos. I think it's telling that the entire supervisor team is here tonight, since we have so many important people to recognize and so many important topics to discuss. They're a team, they're a unit, and I really, really appreciate them coming out after hours. So, now that I've buttered them up, with that, I'm going to transition to Dr. Nikoja. And Dr. Nikoja, I'm going to set you up, and I'd also like to say a few introductory words, and then I'll give you my mic. So, just give me one second. While I set up. So, the first thing that we are going to learn more about is the one-to-one initiative. We've all been waiting to take a deeper dive into the program that, thanks to the Board Finance Committee and the backing and support of the Curriculum Committee and the Board President, of course, and then all the like work that Dr. Nikoja has done, we're prepared to finally take our school district to the next technological age and do it while balancing the budget. We realized when we were working through the budget, starting in, let's say, I think it was December, it was at that point that we realized we were expending so much money to repair broken equipment, add certain required pieces of technology, that we could probably do the same thing, maintain the same budgetary levels for our technology line, and actually provide even more for the kids if we did it creatively and in a smart fashion. And that's exactly what Dr. Nikoja's like work led to. So, tonight, she is going to first hopefully address the questions that I have collected from the board and some members of the community, but then, of course, be available to ask other questions that might come up. So, I'm going to hand you the mic.
Thank you. And I brought John Gartner up, for those who don't know, who is our District Network and System Specialist, who's been instrumental in helping us along the way with our initiative. So, some of the things I'll speak to in terms of our rollout and our initiative, and I'll pass the mic to John to help with some of the infrastructure and technical pieces. So, I'm excited to stand here. Oh, it's vibrating. It's jumping. Oh, this is a fancy.
It's a tech talk.
Okay, thank you. The fancy ones, I'm not used to. Okay, so, our agenda tonight, I divided all the one-to-one initiative items into four agenda items. So, we'll talk about the preparation, what we need to do to prepare for the initiative and the rollout, the distribution of the devices, the professional development and maintenance and support, basically ongoing support for the devices. So, for preparation, I'm going to let John talk about our infrastructure.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So, one thing we looked at when we were thinking this one-to-one was kind of where we are now and where we have to be for the infrastructure for this. So, we looked at specifically filtering and kind of monitoring. So, we have a sonic wall now. It does do such a great job keeping track of, like, who does what, websites and stuff like that. So, we reached out to a few companies, trying to get some quotes and do some demos, and we found a company called Families On, and they're sort of new within the five years to the US, but they did some screenshots. I know they're very small, but it offers a lot of functionality, a lot of filtering, a lot of reporting that we can do, and it also allows us to filter devices at home. So, when the kids take it home, we don't have to worry about them doing anything that we wouldn't allow here on-site. And then, of course, there's a lot of monitoring, a lot of reports, so if they were to go to any site, it would be blocked. We can set up notifications. And also, it does, if they search any keywords, it maybe flags inappropriate, we can set up alerts to go to the proper administration, so they can deal with the guidance council, whoever that may be, you know, for that. So, we're very excited, and hopefully we'll get that soon, start demoing it, getting some logins, doing some training and stuff like that. And then with the bandwidth, it's been an ongoing issue for a while, Wi-Fi, internet, Bartle internet, stuff like that. So, we're looking to get new access points in Marocques, and we piloted it in high school, Mr. Laster saw, and they were able to hold the capacity, the load, no problem. Some teachers have it, and they love it. So, luckily, we were able to lock some of those up, and they will go middle and high school. We're going to take the older access points, retire them, and the newer ones that were bought last year will go to Irving and Bartle to build up that infrastructure there. And that'll happen this summer. And also, we're going to change some of the networks a little bit. So, when I started, it was just one network for middle and high school, one for Bartle, one for Irving. So, Bartle and middle and high school are the same right now, and we're going to do Irving as well. But it'll be a staff network for staff devices, district staff devices connect, and then we'll have a student network for Chromebooks, and then we'll have a Bring Your Own Device network for teachers and students who bring their own devices, phones, whatever. But that network will timeout hopefully in 30 minutes to try to keep the bandwidth available. And the last one will be visitors, so we have workshops and stuff, we'll be able to connect with a special login to try to keep everything secure. And also, with the bandwidth, we're going to try to take what we have and kind of split it between the buildings, so that nobody's fighting somebody else for bandwidth. We're going to throttle that, especially on the Bring Your Own Device and visitor. We're not going to allow Netflix, any streaming like that, so that our focus is more on the initiative, one-to-one initiative, and ensuring that students get on the internet and staff can do what they have to do. And lastly, just some fiber. Bartle and Irving, we're using like a wireless internet feed when I started, and Bartle's died, so come July, we're going to, fiber is already in Irving and Bartle, we're waiting on it for the high school, and then we will be directly connected fiber, so it'll guarantee service all, you know, 99.9% of the time, and we'll make sure we can provide the amount of bandwidth to those, to those buildings.
So, that's good news. So, when we have weather-related events, we'll still be up and running, no problems. So, thank you, John, for all that hard work. Also, in preparation, I know we've been reviewing some of the board policies on technology, which we appreciate, making sure our acceptable use policy is up to date, the BYOD revamping those policies as well. We've been working on the device agreement. I won't show it yet, because it's still a work in progress. We've had the lawyer, the district lawyer, look at it to fine-tune it to make sure that our agreement aligns with the policy and aligns with the expectations of the device given out to the students. So, it would be required that all students and their guardians sign the device agreement before physically receiving the device. In addition, we're looking at, we are creating an insurance policy slash breakage document that we're working on now, again, looking at what would that be, how much that would cost. But the idea is there would be optional insurance for guardians to purchase for the device, so at a nominal fee, and that can be prorated depending on when they come into the school year, depending on the number of students they have in middle and high school for getting the devices. Most districts usually do around $35 to $40 is about the average for the insurance. On the policy, it shows a breakdown of the cost of everything if you have the insurance or if you don't have the insurance, if you break or lose your charger, if keys pop off, if something happens to the screen, so everything has sort of different values, and it would cover so many accidental damages to the devices. In addition, the protocol, it would outline the protocol on what a student would do if their Chromebook was damaged, if the Chromebook went missing, things like that, what are the protocols for those. So, we're working on that as well. We have to obviously get the devices and then enroll them and set up, so I'll let John talk a little bit about how we'll sort of manage that. Right now, all of our dates are to be determined, so a couple of factors right now is that we just went out to get the finance money, so we actually have to acquire the money, and then we have to get the devices. It's not, it's not uncommon for, like, CDW, who gave us the best price on some Dell Chromebooks, that it may cause a delay to get 950 of them. So, it's one thing to say, "I need 30 of something," and they probably have it in stock and ready to go, but it may be another thing. I don't know if they'll have 900 and something of them ready when we are, so that may delay our rollout. So, I'd love to have a September rollout, but I can't guarantee that, because I don't know the timeline in which we're going to get the devices, and then enrolling them on our domain and getting them on the network and the filtering and all that. You know, again, I don't know what that timeline is going to be, but probably definitely no later than January. So, anywhere between September and January will be our rollout.
So, when we get stuff into the tech department, obviously, Dr. Nikoja mentioned that we're going to, they have to get enrolled, but also, we have to asset tag them, make sure they know, like, the property of Highland Park, and the asset tags have a barcode on them. I think we have some from the insurance, ordinary insurance, we get them. And once we do that, hopefully, we're going to assign them, consider a number to a student, specific student, and then update that in Genesis, Google Management Console, and we have like an internal tech department database, we'll put it in there as well. And then, we'll look to kind of keep them organized in boxes, so this way, kids can take them with them and dispose of the boxes instead of us having to dispose of them. And the boxes will be labeled, so we should be, we should be set.
And for, if you don't know, Chromebooks are really nice, because they're cloud-based operating systems, so there's no... I don't know if they'll have 900 and something of them ready when we are, so that may delay our rollout. So I'd love to have a September rollout, but I can't guarantee that because I don't know the timeline in which we're going to get the devices, and then enrolling them on our domain, and getting them on the network, and the filtering and all that. You know, again, I don't know what that timeline is going to be, but probably definitely no later than January. So anywhere between September and January will be our rollout.
So when we get stuff into the tech department, obviously Dr. Nikosia mentioned that we're going to, they have to get enrolled, but also we have to asset tag them, make sure they know like a property of Highland Park. And the asset tags have a barcode on them. I think we have some from the insurance, ordinary insurance, we get them. And once we do that, hopefully, we're going to assign them, consider a number to a student, specific student, and then update that in Genesis, Google Management Console, and we have like an internal tech department database, we'll put it in there as well. And then we'll look to kind of keep them organized in boxes, so this way kids can take them with them and dispose of the boxes instead of us having to dispose of them. And the boxes will be labeled, so we should be, we should be set.
And for, if you don't know, Chromebooks are really nice because they're cloud-based operating systems, so there's no hardware, there's no malware, there's no anywhere. It's just the cloud. So you can't get a virus on it or anything like that. It updates automatically, you don't have to click for updates. The other thing that's really nice that, why most K-12 districts are using Chromebooks is because once it's enrolled on our console, we can set it up so that nobody else can log into the Chromebooks unless you're, you have a Highland Park credential account. So if for some reason it gets lost, somebody else trying to log in won't be able to. So that's kind of a nice feature, again, but we have to set it up. And then asset tag, I just took an example from another school district, but you can put whatever you want on that label. So we can put property of Highland Park, Board of Education, an address or a phone number, so just in case it's lost or something happens, it can come back to its rightful owner. Also in preparation, we started a parent and student frequently asked questions page, which was shared. Dr. Taylor has it and was sharing it around. So in other districts, we just put some frequently asked questions about safety of student information is a big ticket item that parents usually ask for. So we put information on Google's policy on there that anything, any application that works within Google's domain has to sign the policy agreement, that student data can't be used for anything. So there's a lot of safety and security around Google, which is why it's a great platform to use in K-12 education, thing, you know, just any kind of frequently asked question. So the Technology Task Force Committee met about two weeks ago, and they're working on editing that document as well. So we have input from multiple stakeholders to generate questions to put in there. So I have a starting point, and then we're tweaking as we go. So for our distribution, the Tech Task Force Committee met again, and we talked about deployment. So obviously, some of the things that we talked about was how do we communicate the initiative? So we were talking to Dr. Taylor about putting out a Honeywell, some notifications to give the heads up that it's coming, when it's coming, and the importance of having the initiative. The committee also talked about rolling out to high school first, and then eighth, then seventh, then sixth. We also talked about possible time of day. We did talk about evening sessions with parents, that the student couldn't actually take the device unless they were with a parent or guardian at an evening session. We've kind of, you know, went back and forth about that. If we do that, we'd probably have to get some volunteers, teacher, staff, to help with sort of an assembly line of rolling that out. That might not be feasible, so it may have to be during the day. We may have to work out with homeroom teachers in the middle school or teachers at the high school on how to actually roll it out. But the idea is the students wouldn't get the device unless they had that document signed, that we know that they agree to the terms and conditions. In addition, we will hold a parent information session before rollout. So I don't have a date yet because I don't want to say August if we're not going to roll out until later in the fall or winter. I kind of want it to be relatively soon, you know, close together. So know that when we go to rollout, we will have a parent information session, several of them during the day and in the evening, for one for high school, separate ones for high school, separate ones for middle school parents and guardians to come and learn information about the importance of a one-to-one initiative and answer any questions or concerns that they may have. Most districts are moving toward a no summer collection, which is what I recommend to the Test Technology Task Force Committee, and I recommend to you all. We have no physical space to store 900 and something Chromebooks over the summer, to keep them charged, air-conditioned, a lot of factors. We just don't have that capacity. Other districts, like Hillsborough, actually built a facility outside, like off, like on their premise somewhere with electricity and all that to house it, and then they found that it was just kind of tedious, because you don't need to reimage them, you don't really need to do anything. So, and I'd like to see the students really own the device and know that it's theirs and feel empowered to use it. So we're going to recommend no summer collection. It's their device until they leave Highland Park. We know that there might be issues with students declining devices in previous districts in which I rolled out a one-to-one initiative. Some students opted to not have the device. We are encouraging them to take the device. Some of the concerns, at least from the teaching and learning aspect of it, is that teachers will be encouraged to offer learning opportunities with the Chromebook in mind. So some of the things that they offer might not be compatible with a myriad of other devices, so we're recommending that they do take it because there's no guarantee that whatever the teacher puts out might work on their device. The other piece, like John had mentioned, is that we are going to have a visitor network that will timeout after a half hour. So they'd have to just log in every half hour back with their credentials, which is probably not annoying, but it may be limited in what they can access because, again, we're trying to push the bandwidth to the teaching and learning end of it. So students can't stream Netflix or Pandora or any of those things on their personal devices because we need to push that bandwidth to teacher devices and student devices for teaching and learning. So again, you'll be in and out, and you might not have access to everything that this, that your peer might have access to. So that's why we're encouraging, you don't have to take it, but we would encourage students to take it. So other distribution things, so we talked about covers. Unfortunately, we just don't have the financial capital to purchase covers for all of these devices. So the Technology Task Force Committee did talk about possibly having it as fundraising opportunities. There were a couple of teachers in the room that were already chomping on the bit for, you know, to get some good deals through our connections with some of these tech companies like CDW and others, go out for bid, and then be able to potentially use it as a fundraiser. So some options for students that want to leave them in school. So we also talked about that in other districts, there are students that don't feel comfortable physically leaving the building with it for a variety of reasons. So in previous districts or in other districts, some special education classes, the teachers have set up little charging stations in their classrooms for the devices, so students don't have to leave with it. So in some of our maybe, you know, our MD classes and things like that, we may want to set up little stations for them, for their devices. Also, in other districts, we've seen that students are able to sign them in and out of the media center daily. So they come in the morning, go to their location where they signed it out, get it, use it for the day, and then at the end of the day, go back and sign it back in. So those are options that we discussed as well. Obviously, you know, probably the more, most important thing about initiative of this caliber is the professional development for teachers. What we don't want to happen is that the device becomes a $400 pencil. So what we want to do is empower teachers to transform teaching and learning by using the device, to really empower them, to do things that you cannot do without technology, sort of hitting that global perspective, empowering students to be creators of knowledge. So the professional development is going to be huge, because I always tell teachers, it's not about the technology, it's about the learning, and that's what is the most important. So I know I've talked to the board about the SAMR model of how we look at technology integration, but just to refresh our memories, so a basic use would be substitution, taking a task that you could do paper and pen and just substituting the device for it. That's just basic substitution. So I can either write my notes by hand, or I could type them into a device. There is augmentation, which is like a little tweak using technology. So if I take my notes by hand, or I do it on the computer, but an augmentation is now there's spell check, there's a thesaurus, I can highlight things, I could add an image, right? I can kind of make some, some more creative options with my note-taking or whatever that is. The right half goes into the transformation. So here's where we ultimately want teachers to be with the devices, which is modification and redefinition. Again, doing things that allow, allow students opportunities that they wouldn't have without the technology, like, you know, Skyping with, with students in other countries or, you know, across the nation to practice a language, things like that, being able to blog, be great users of it, create their own content, put their own apps out there, make their own video games and post them and try to sell them, those kinds of things that we can do. But that comes with a lot of training. So we will be offering at our September in-service, I think we have an hour of time in September due to a myriad of other things going on, to provide some professional development, which is okay, because if we're not rolling out in September, we have plenty of other time. In November, we have the PD session in November that we will commit to doing some tech integration work with the teachers. In addition, we have our Professional Development Academy that's run by Ms. Knapp that allows teachers to turnkey what they know. We do have a lot of teachers that are doing some innovative work with technology in the district, so we're really going to sort of tap them on the shoulder and see if they'd be interested in running workshops in our after-school PD Academy. And then we wanted to talk about maintenance and support, ongoing, the sort of ongoing work after we roll it out, after we're finding PD, now what? So I'll let John talk about a couple of things and then jump in if need be.
So like Dr. Nikosia mentioned, when we had the Tech Task Force Committee, we kind of chatted about what, how we're going to handle like any breakage that comes in, because obviously if you have a couple of kids coming day, it's just too much to have the tech department constantly grab them and work on them. It just makes sense to kind of do it like once a week or something like that. So we were thinking possibly the media center, where the kids can kind of bring them in, somebody in there can help them, give them a loner, kind of log what's wrong with it, and then the, as a department, we can go kind of collect them, get a list of what's wrong with each, and then send them all after service at one time instead of sending one or two a day. It just, it doesn't make much sense to do that. So kind of supporting technical needs, we would do the best we can to help out. Teachers maybe made some sort of kind of cheat sheets or simple things that they can do, kind of help kids, their screen sideways or something like that, because that does happen. And then we thought about what if kids forgot their charger at home, and then the Chromebooks get? So we thought about making some sort of charging station, which would just really be one of the older Chromebook carts or laptop carts that have stood around, and kind of outfit them with some charger so that kids can come in the morning or afternoon or at lunch, kind of drop them in the media center, let them charge for a little while, and then pick them up later. And the new Dell Chromebooks charge extremely fast, like 15 minutes, it can be like two, two and a half hours of charge, so it's really not much of an issue. You know, maybe we even contemplated maybe some charges in classrooms. Again, haven't quite figured that out yet, but that would be definitely a way of kind of helping the kids that forgot to charge them or left to charge at home, stuff like that. So if you want to add anything.
Yeah, I was just going to add that the Chromebooks, especially the newer models like the Dells that we're purchasing, the charge can last up to like 12, 15, 18 hours, and that's if you're like on it all the time and it doesn't go to sleep and the screen, you know, clears out. So it really is a very robust machine that when taken care of can really last the life expectancy even plus of the devices. So we're doing a four-year lease on that, on the devices. So we really feel confident that the newer model machines nowadays really can withhold that, that capacity. I think any longer than four years, we're probably stretching it a little bit, but I think we're pretty confident with that. In addition, tracking repairs and billing, so something we'll have to, you know, work internally on, on that sort of process, what that looks like. So I have some examples that I shared with members of the leadership team on a sort of a workflow of how that goes, if it can be repaired, if it can't be repaired, if they purchased the insurance, if they didn't purchase the insurance, and sort of that, sort of flow chart of what that looks like, and how do we track all that information, collect the money if need be, where does that go, and how does that look? Again, we're still sort of working that out, but know that it's on our radar. And lastly, something for maintenance and support is the idea of free versus paid applications. So we have options now. We do a lot of great things with technology now, but we want to provide incentive for teachers and sort of a workflow of how that works, because the minute you get a device, you're like, I want to try all these great things, and they all cost a lot of money. But we have to be mindful that the applications that we're purchasing really benefit student learning and can be, really be transformative. So I would recommend that we do a flow chart of, you know, I'm interested in doing this app, okay. So is it paid, is it, do they have a free option? Did I try the free option? What data, you know, did I collect by using the free option that says that this, I should try the paid option of it? And then we can reach out, and usually you can do a trial, anywhere between 30 and 90 days of a paid application for free, and then collecting that data to say, you know, was this really something that was used to transform teaching and learning and really benefited student learning? And if so, then we can purchase something, whether it's a district license, a classroom license, a school license, things like that. But if it doesn't, then we kind of stop there and then maybe consider other applications that can do what we want it to do. So we really want to be mindful that we're not just trying a whole bunch of stuff without ensuring that it really meets the needs of our students and to impact instruction. So I also have that on my radar. We're putting together a flow chart, and I'll work with members of the leadership team and the Technology Task Force Committee to ensure that that protocol is in place, you know, moving forward for the one-to-one as well. So, thank you. No, no big ending. No fun gift at the end, sorry. Questions?
Yeah. Okay. So, there was one thing that I wanted to mention, and I was looking it up on my, on my phone, but I couldn't find it. At the board conference that we went to in October, there was a presentation given by media specialists and what we call librarians, but they are media specialists at this point, and they were talking about how they are underutilized because they can do these things, they're trained to do these things, like Naviance, stuff like that. So I don't know if, I mean, I like the idea of the media center, and I don't know if that's something that drove that decision to kind of make the media center the hub, but I was wondering if that was true. I didn't want to assume anything.
Yeah, that is predominantly the role, the role of a traditional librarian has morphed a little bit into, again, the technology infusion and more media literacy, right? Fake news and that kind of thing. So that's why most districts utilize the media center specialist in that magnitude. So we thought we would do the same, I've talked to Mr. Lassiter, and he agrees, that we'll work with Ms. Puccio, for example, on, you know, sort of navigating all of that, but a slow integration to throw something fully on her that she might not be well-trained. I don't really know what her training and background is, you know, in, in the Chromebooks themselves, you know, does, you know, do our media center specialists have the knowledge to open it up and say, I can do a simple, quick look at the device to know what's wrong with it? I don't know, and I don't want to put them on that, anything uncomfortable on them until we, they have more understanding of what we're doing. So I think for right now, it was just more of a best place to do the transition of, I have a broken one and I need a loner one, and then hopefully that will morph into something more as everybody gets comfortable with it.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. And obviously, there's a learning curve for everyone because we've never done this before. And then my other, I had two more. The link, the parent and student frequently asked questions page, it said that the Technology Task Force Committee is updating and adding to that page. So I just wanted to make sure that we were like mindful of presenting things on that page in different languages for the families that don't speak English. Is that part of it?
Absolutely, but I probably would pass that to the people that do that. So I think we have, we hire people that translate that for us. So once the document is finalized, I like to put everything, we would host, I didn't mention that, on the technology website, on the district website would be the whole one-to-one website that this document would live on with everything else, all of our information. I like it as a Google Doc, because then you can update it in real time, you don't have to log in and out of a website to update something. So I would probably have to just be mindful that if we did update something in there to go to the translator, you know, for the different languages, to make sure that those are being updated as my original one is being updated.
Yeah. I mean, I, I also thought that maybe Genesis would be a place to house it as well, maybe, you know, different points of access. I don't know if Genesis is a place that you thought of as housing that kind of information, but...
I mean, it definitely is a place that you could push out the reminder that the information is there, but to, I don't think it really works nicely with...
Right, that platform.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then my last thing was curriculum kind of perspective. As far as the conference again that we went to, there was one school district that I can't remember where they were, but I can find it, where they were doing a kind of thing where it was almost like a resume, but it was more like a reflective type thing where kids would have like almost a portfolio built over many years using their Chromebooks or whatever devices, iPads, whatever, to build this website. It was not live and public until they were in high school, but they were starting to build it, I think as young as fifth grade, where they were like reflecting on their best work of the year, and then they were presenting it, and they were doing web design. So it was a part of the curriculum that started very young. It was really integrated well, and there was a lot of consistency. And I was hoping that we could research that type of usage, because I felt like in many ways it was benefiting like the SEL work that we're promoting, you know, like journaling and... you know, like journaling and reflecting on your work is a big deal.
Ownership of your work.
What's that?
Ownership of your work.
Yeah, yeah. And then at the end of it, when you're ready to apply to college or get a job or whatever, you had this beautiful website that you had built for years and showing your growth. It was just the coolest thing. And I'm definitely going to find the name of this district and all the details, but that's something I just wanted to kind of throw out there and make sure that that was on radar.
Well, all the supervisors out there are like, huh, yeah.
Absolutely. Well, actually, we were, we talked about like that way of how do we vertically articulate what is happening from one grade to another? And that's actually been on our radar since we've all started is how do we create that portfolio instead of it just being a folder with these papers that collects dust over time and how do the students really own it? And so that's really that transformation is getting students to own their learning and it doesn't just have to be a website. It really can be anything creative. You know, it could be Flipgrid where the students are making videos of reflection. We have some amazing fifth grade teachers that are Flipgrid experts now. They're ambassadors for Flipgrid where they're creating these really cool reflective videos. They share them with each other in fifth grade. They share them, you know, with other school districts as a way to reflect on learning, teaching each other and things like that. So there's so many great platforms out there, but that's actually been on our radar to have this sort of portfolio ongoing of the work. So, mind reader.
If I can speak for all of us, we're ready.
Okay, we are too. Excellent.
Yeah, so I had two questions. It seems like there are a lot of wonderful opportunities with this new technology as far as learning. Just as one of the attractions, I understand from the committee was the cost savings. So this would be cheaper than what we're, have the alternative to do. It seems that one of the possibilities for the cost savings is just the electronic versions of the textbooks tend to be about $50 cheaper for each textbook. So even on that basis alone, you know, you could really justify it. But what do you, what's the proposal to do with the kids who, you know, decline the Chromebook? Because you said that is an option. Are we going to offer them paper textbooks or what's the plan for that?
Right, so I encourage all teachers to have backups. One, because if the power goes out and there is no internet, although the devices can work offline and be set up offline, not everything might be accessible. The docs might be, Google platform will be, but their textbook might not or the resources that they're looking for. So we do want to make sure we have what I call is a blended learning model. That's very popular because it's not about the technology, it's about the instruction. So what I encourage them is...
Just for the specific students that decline?
So I mean, so again, there are options. So we still have plenty of resources. So I'm going to say resources in general because it can be textbooks, it can be articles, it can be, you know, manipulatives, whatever it is, it's, the physical item is still available to students.
So that the paper version of that textbook would be available to the students?
So we're really trying to move toward best practices. So I'll give an example just in my world of algebra and geometry for high school. So we're not purchasing textbooks. We don't actually even want to purchase online textbooks because publishers are making these books for states like Texas and the amount of it that we actually use is very minimal. So what we want to do is what we already have is a great resource, but it's not the only resource. So we want to provide other opportunities that are great resources to meet the needs of all of our learners in the classroom because they all learn in different capacities. So, and what we want to do is empower students to identify how they learn best and provide resources to support that. So whatever that's going to be, there will be options for all the different students. So it's not like we're going to say we're going to purchase McGraw-Hill text and then have a couple of hard copies. We're actually going to look at resources for all learners and then provide those as options for students.
My other question was, what are the consequences if they, you know, don't have the insurance policy and it breaks and they're not able to pay or so on?
So they would, I mean, if it breaks and they don't have the insurance and they have to pay the fee. So if you look at the document that was sent, we were trying to break it down by what the issue is. So if they lose their power cord, how much does that cost? You know, maybe $40, $50. So we would require that if, for some reason, they don't purchase it and we still have options for free and reduced lunch, we'd offer reduced prices or free prices to those. So part of the insurance is to help provide the additional funding to offset those costs as well. They are covered. We have a certain capacity with the insurance, but again, we're keeping them for four years. The pot of money eventually runs out. So, so we have to make sure that we are, you know, taking good care of them, getting students to really own these devices, take good care of them, treat them as their own, not a tragedy. The common situation like the laptops and Chromebook carts that exist now.
So I had a few questions. So one of them is, would it not be more cost-effective and cheaper to only have something like 400, 500, 600 instead of the full 900 something that's planned? Especially since some students like Avery and I do have our own laptops. It is possible to, and considering that it is possible to block like streaming, everything like that, games and that, so that these laptops can only be used for learning, would it not be more cost-effective for the school and for, to only have a few instead of forcing everyone to take one?
So we want to provide access for all. So it's about ensuring that we have access for all students. I can't, I can't predict how many would actually take the device and how many wouldn't. Some parents allow students to bring devices from home just because we don't provide it here. So parents might be willing to say, you know what, don't bring the one that I bought you that's really expensive because it's a Mac. Instead, you know, the Chromebooks are a little bit cheaper, so let's take the district-issued one. You know, because there's monitoring, there's filtering that, you know, the device, you might not have that ability on your home network. So there is an allure to taking it, but because we can't guarantee that all students are going to accept or decline, we have to make sure we provide for all.
Okay, and also, so Chromebooks do have a very limited, like compared to Windows and Mac, options for apps, for different downloads. Especially one example I know is that for CompSci, we use Eclipse or back in freshman year, we use Eclipse and right now they do too, which is unavailable for like Chrome devices, Chromebooks. So what would we do for students who need access to that at home while not being able to provide it? I know that there is an option to turn the Chromebook into the Linux operating system instead of the Chrome operating system. So would that be an option for students?
It definitely could. And Mr. Harper and Mr. Moore are really good about providing access for students at that level. So the only concern would be certain applications. I will say Google is doing amazing things with their, the combination of them with the Android market to allow Android applications available on the Chrome platform, which has been in the last five years a really big turnaround for K-12 education and using the Chromebooks, which is why more districts are purchasing them. But I would say those, the rarity like a CompSci class has the desktop computers in the classroom for that kind of functionality. The same thing with our, the business program at the high school that uses certain programming, you know, Microsoft One and things like that, although that's a cloud-based system. The power of cloud is that you can do a lot of it and it's come a long way. So I would recommend working with Mr. Moore and Mr. Harper to, you know, look at those options. I know Scratch has come a long way and is now available. SketchUp is now available. So again, within the past couple of years, there's been an explosion of these tech companies ensuring that their applications work on the Chrome platform.
May I just interject about the Chrome and Eclipse question? So, excuse me, it's a long time ago, but my company used Eclipse in development and I keep in touch with people. And there are extensions for Chromebook that are available for Eclipse. So there are ways to run Eclipse on Chrome and I'm sure our people will understand how to do that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Can I interject with a quick question? Okay, here we go. So I think what finally got the board, first of all, thank you. It is amazing to hear from experts, actually. You thought of so many questions I had never thought of. Oh God, charging stations, right. My kid is never going to bring his charging cable. No offense to my child who's probably watching. I mean, I know I forget mine all the time. Moving on to the sort of more, I think what finally got the board on board with this is that we, the equity question, right? We, teachers are assigning online and technology-dependent homework now. Some kids can't do it. We can't let that continue. But I can see that, I can see us quickly forgetting about the online/offline problem, right? And pretty soon, everybody's like, wow, you've got these great apps, Android apps on the Chromebook, but you have to have access. And I know, you know, you can use Docs, the Doc suite, offline. I'd like to make, just make sure that our teachers have PD and that it's emphasized to our teachers that homework needs to be accessible to everybody. And a large percentage of our students are not going to have access to the internet, not reliable access. You know, they're going to be picking up other kids after school so they can't stay at the computer lab. They feel awkward sitting in Dunkin' Donuts not buying anything with their little sister. You know, so I don't want to see us like just evolve, morph back into this inaccessible digital divide, digital divide kind of situation. And I think teachers, I mean, if teachers are like me and they're not, they don't have a tech background, they're going to need to understand how to make that possible. So, and I think that's going to be one of the first things we do. Otherwise, this program is what we all feared it was going to be, you know, a couple of years ago. How are we going to make sure that that happens?
So again, providing really great, ongoing, embedded, timely, professional development, you know, based on their needs. Not every teacher is there, right? Some teachers are beyond that, so they wouldn't have to necessarily sit for that PD. But again, doing ample needs assessments, identifying teachers that are, you know, in need. Actually, the supervisors and I even talked about possibly just pinpointing the teachers that we know need that and tapping them on the shoulder to attend certain training. Again, but it has to be ongoing. That's why I highlighted the PD Academy and those certain times through the year. The district really needs to take those professional development opportunities and harness them for the power of this initiative. A one-hour training in September is not going to be enough. It's got to be ongoing. The, you know, today with a couple of members of the leadership team, we actually brainstormed some ideas of having, you know, can we have some half-day opportunities where the kids could, the middle and high school students could go home and the teachers could get a half-day PD or something like that? Again, what are ways that we can be creative to provide more professional development for these teachers? I mean, we even thought about classroom management as an issue, right? Like the teacher's like, how do I see all the screens? How do I know the students are on task? So things that are on, you know, the supervisor's radar are providing, making sure that there's differentiated instruction, that teachers understand that assignments and learning opportunities have to be engaging. If the students are not engaged, they're going to be off task and it doesn't matter if they're doodling with a paper and pen or they're surfing the web, right? They're going to be off task. So those things are on our immediate radar and then ensuring that it's a blended learning model. When technology is appropriate and will transform learning, use it. If it's not appropriate, paper and pen. There's still value in that. There's still value in a book. There's still value in all of that. But the teachers have to really understand a blended learning model, which would be at the crux of our ongoing PD.
That's awesome. Thank you. I did have sort of one, in addition to the like the more general issue about blended learning and not being over-reliant on technology and all that kind of thing, there is this very specific issue about homework. And what has happened now is that even though we've tried to emphasize to teachers that some children don't have technology at home, it's really been impossible to control because as you can imagine, teachers, you know, they want to make use of the technology that's out there and it's, you know, it's an important part of our kids' education. So, you know, once the cat is out of the bag and teachers are assigning lots of Google homework as they are now, it's very hard to stop. It's very hard to get teachers to say, please ask everyone in your class if they have a computer and if they don't, then please make a hard copy. So I want to make sure that we start not just with PD, but with like real articulation of leadership values that this is not to be used for mandatory online homework. Otherwise, we're just back where we started, only now we have, you know, even a bigger problem. And we can't let it get off the ground where everybody gets used to assigning stuff to happen in this online environment at home because then it's so hard to pull back, understandably, because teachers, you know, the technology is so tempting and it's wonderful. So I just, that has to be clear from the get-go this time. And that's maybe more of a Scott issue.
Look, I don't have a, I don't have an answer right away to that question. But besides the professional development, of course, we can always hold teachers accountable via their lesson plans. If things come to our attention, we need to follow up.
But before it comes to your attention, I mean, I don't want it to have to be like the last couple of years on the board, we've had a lot of like, hey Scott, teachers are still assigning a lot of homework that's online. Hey Scott, it's very hard at that point.
I agree with you that what we should be doing is at the outset of the professional development, lay down the reality, which is we're only at this place because it came out of a central leadership team discussion that tried to resolve the equity issue, bottom line.
And this is the percentage of students that probably don't have internet that they can use for homework.
But outside of that, I think we're just going to have to closely monitor and, I mean, there's really no, you know, we can't monitor the machines. We're not going to do that either.
No, 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 I'm not worried about that. I just, we have to make it clear from the get-go. I don't want it to turn into a thing where you're waiting to find out if something comes to your attention because then it's just like a nightmare.
I agree 1,000%. That's why we're here. That's why we're at this place.
That's wonderful. That's great. Thank you so much.
Other questions?
Yeah, actually.
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, are you? I was wondering for the insurance for the Chromebooks, would the student pay for that? Or would that be like subsidized by the school or?
I'm sorry, repeat the question?
Who pays for the insurance for the Chromebooks?
So a parent or guardian or student, whoever wants to pay for the month, pay for it. Again, it would be, there's free and reduced lunch equivalency for options for purchasing of it. And then most districts, which we haven't really decided again, so a lot of these are still unknowns because we haven't collectively made the decision. But I would encourage us to do what other districts do, which is offer sort of family discounts as well. So if you have a child and two children in the same grade, you could get a reduced, you know, cost or one, in one school, one in the other. So instead of paying $40 or $80, you pay, you know, $60 or something like that for both. So again, those are options as well. And then it would be a yearly fee. And again, it covers, I think it outlined, we have decided it could potentially outline two accidental damages. So it outlines specifically, again, the nuts and bolts. I don't think we've collectively decided on what that's going to be, but it would cover a certain number of things that would come up.
So would it be mandatory to check out?
No, it's not mandatory.
Yeah, I mean...
But if you don't, but if you don't purchase it, it's, again, it's, you have to think of it as, it's like you're loaning, you're being loaned a textbook or something like that, right? You have to take responsibility if you're taking it to and from school that it's still your responsibility to give it back in roughly, generally, the same shape for which it came. So the difference is because technology is a lot different from a textbook. We don't say you have to purchase insurance on a textbook, right? Because I mean, besides maybe some little bit of water damage, well, maybe we should, right? The drawing it or something like that, but typically they don't, it takes years and years and years and years and years for that textbook to be, come damaged beyond use. The lifespan of a technology device is probably a little bit less, which is why the insurance is so critical.
Yeah, I guess I just wonder then if we are like at least encouraging students to take out this insurance, might it be better to, I mean, seeing as, you know, in ZIU and some others have kind of expressed this, instead of doing a one-to-one program, which, you know, just speaking as a student, someone that's like in school like for the entire school year, there are students that bring laptops every day that, you know, won't take this program because, you know, like me or ZIU, we already have laptops and we're pretty much fine with that. I mean, might it be better just to cut down the amount of Chromebooks we're buying and then use that leftover money to like subsidize or help, you know, pay for some of the insurance for the students that actually need this? Because I'm just thinking of like, I know this is about increasing equality in our schools and that's very important, but equality is not really the same thing as equity, which is, you know, trying to identify the students that are disadvantaged and bring them to a level that all of the other students are at. Equality is just giving everybody the same thing, which is what this program would be doing, which isn't always effective because that doesn't always ensure that, you know, the people who are actually needing get what they need to be at the same level as everyone else. So, you know, for students like me and ZIU, we don't really need Chromebooks, but for students that, like, you know, don't have that or have that support and technology at home, they might need more and they might need, you know, help with their, with their insurance on the Chromebooks or something like that. And that's something we could do using kind of a reduced amount of Chromebooks. I mean, I know we have like surveys that show how many students use this technology. They're kind of rough results, but, you know, I think we could like probably save some money if we reduced it, you know, even a bit.
For the students who are on for your reduced lunch, it wouldn't be a cost. So if you're on free lunch, you're not going to pay for the insurance. Or if you're on reduced lunch, you'd pay a reduced rate for the insurance. So that's kind of built in.
And I'm going to paint a picture, just to your point, and because I've already spoken about the point, so I won't reiterate myself, but I'll paint a picture of a student who was in need of, a special needs student who needed a one-to-one device. The consultant that we used to look at what would be a best suitable device was an iPad. And all the apps were a lot of money. So an iPad is a lot of money and the applications to help the student succeed in school because of their disability was a lot of money. So I looked through it and I said, all of these things have an equivalent on a Chromebook. And there are some Chromebooks that are touchscreen, so everything matched up. So my recommendation to the special ed department, to Ms. Boudine, was get this device with these applications and these extensions. applications and these extensions. Now that student looks like their peers in a general education in all classes because they have a Chromebook just like their peers. They look no different.
I can envision chargers going, getting lost, getting stolen, et cetera. Do we have a plan for, as a district, purchasing extras of things like chargers so that, because I have a feeling that that's going to become a thing?
So, it's rolled into the, it's rolled into the insurance as a, as a cost. And then in addition, we worked with Mr. Lassiter and Ms. Brady today actually on, you know, purchasing more chargers, you know, in general for the schools and then as a department to give out as loners, absolutely. One of the things we do want to encourage that we talked to building administration today about is creating opportunity for students to own this initiative. So, around other schools that I visited, there are posters that students generate on how to be a good digital citizen. Don't forget to have your thing charged, right? Don't forget your charger, things like that. So, we really want to, we're going to work on empowering the students to take ownership over this and be the voice for themselves and help each other with it. So, hopefully, we won't run into that issue. But we're prepared, but we are prepared, just in case. We are prepared.
I just want to remind everyone that it's quarter to nine. We have another presentation and our entire agendas. So, I mean, we could go all night with questions, but unless they're super critical, I, yeah, I mean, Christina's not going anywhere. We can email additional questions, but I mean, we could talk about this conceivably all night long, but we do have another presentation and a full agenda.
So, perhaps you can email me the questions, and I can filter them out to either John or Christina, or Linda, if it's a budgetary-related question. Is that acceptable?
It's good.
That sounds great.
Monique, did you have one you wanted?
It's okay.
Yeah, you're good, you're sure?
Yep.
Okay. I don't want to cut anybody off, but I also don't want to be here at midnight.
So, John, why don't you hit the camera? Thank you so much, Christina. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
West Department. So, I'd like to now invite Mr. Lassiter, Ms. Fittipaldi, anybody who would like to come up to talk about the Honors Option Program that we've had in place, we'll be entering our third year. Now, keep in mind that the one-to-one initiative was born out of the need to promote equity. And I do really, you probably have seen that graphic, right? The equality versus equity graphic. We're talking about equity, equal opportunity, not equality across the board. And so does the Honors Option Initiative address the second goal in our strategic plan, which is all about promoting educational equity. So, that is, that has been the focus of our Honors Option Program. Before I pass the torch to, I guess, Mr. Lassiter next, I would like to, again, remind everybody, this is the third year, which we're entering the program. We have worked closely with HPEA in the last month to resolve any concerns that members of the Teachers Association had. We've successfully done that. In fact, next Monday night, there'll be a sidebar presented to you for passage. So, with that, Mike, I'm going to give you the clicker, and then we can all just chime in.
And then, Darcy, that's been reviewed by our attorneys.
Great, thank you.
Before I begin talking about the Honors Option, I just want to thank Dr. Nikosia, Mr. Gartner, and the board, because the whole one-to-one initiative is something that I dreamed of way back when, when I came to the district and designed a course called Global Issues and really wanted to bring technology into the classroom. So, seeing us move in that direction after 25 years being here is just so exciting.
Are you saying that's a slow pace of change, Mr. Lester?
And I know there's lots of questions, but we're thinking about as many as we possibly can, and we're really going to move in the right direction. I trust that we'll be able to answer all those questions and do this right. And Dr. Taylor is right, this is all about equity. And this Honors Option is something that we really, working with the supervisors, working with the teachers that want to take this on, I think we're moving in the right direction. It's all part of the strategic plan. Research the best practices to promote mixed ability classes, and I've been part of that since middle school. Almost all the middle school classes are not really tracked at the high school. Clearly, there is tracking, whether it be what we call college prep, even though all the courses are supposed to be college prep, the Honors classes, the AP courses. How do we get more students into higher-level classes and not have everyone in tracks? Implementing instruction and assessment strategies that differentiate instruction for each learner, and that's what you have to do. If you're going to put them in mixed ability classes, you have to be ready to differentiate. So, students have always been given opportunities for success at all levels, and an open policy to students and parents to wave students into higher-level courses has always existed. If a student isn't recommended for an Honors course or an AP course, they can wave into it and take that course. Students are encouraged by their school counselors, by their teachers, and recommended to take those most challenging courses that they can, and then the teachers differentiate. So, we started this in history, as the board is aware. We started it last year, and I did the research to track how our AP US History and our Honors US II History courses actually always broke out. And for years, it was roughly about the same. When we first started the US II Honors, AP and US II Honors were equal. Took a couple of years before AP US History started to catch on. Last year, when we ran the US II Honors and the AP US History, you can see, there was a drastic change when we added in the Honors Option. More students decided to take the AP US History, and the Honors and regular students kind of started to balance out. And as this year, you can see, the Honors and regular students are getting closer and closer together, and the AP students are roughly about the same. It's a junior class, and the numbers may look slightly different, but look at the percentages. And that's because the junior class this year versus last year is just smaller, okay? But more students are taking more advanced courses. You can see the ethnic diversity from two years ago and last year, about the same, okay? In the 11th grade, this year, basically the same. You look at, oh, I'm sorry, I wanted to go backwards. So, you look here, I try to use the same colors. These were made a little bit at a different time, okay? And so, if you see them, they're all about the same. Our ethnic diversity really doesn't fluctuate a lot.
Is this, I'm sorry, Mike, is that the whole class?
That's the whole 11th grade.
That's the entire 11th grade? Okay.
That's the whole 11th grade. So, over the past three years, okay, look at your Asian, Black, Hispanic, mixed, and White.
Okay.
The numbers are within a percentage to 2% difference.
So, that's two different cohorts in the 11th grade?
Exactly.
That's the 11th grade cohort for 2016-17 and the 11th grade cohort in 2017-2018.
Exactly.
So, it's two different cohorts.
And so, if you look at the current 11th grade, it's still roughly about the same, okay? However, when we move to the Honors Option, look at the diversity in the classes. And we talked about this last year, there was a dramatic change, okay? The numbers may be small. I know that. We all know that. We're trying to push to make it larger so that more students of color start taking the advanced courses. This year, still roughly about the same breakdown when you look at the pie charts, okay? So, the goal in the course is obviously to try to get more students of color into these advanced courses. We're seeing that at least more are trying it out. Same thing with AP, okay? You can see over the past couple of years, 2016, 2017, 2017, 2018, still basically the same breakdown, okay? However, now we're seeing a little bit more diversity this year in the AP courses, okay? So, the numbers are small, but the diversity in the entire picture is increasing.
Just one last question.
What's the goal? Obviously, to continue this and try to expand on it. Continue the chance for students to wave into these courses. Continue the AP expansion, and we're doing so. AP Langen Composition, which is the companion course to basically the AP US History, they're both offered in 11th grade, expanded from only one section for many years to two sections this year, okay? Or two sections, I'm sorry, to three. AP Bio expanded from one to two sections this year. AP Physics is going to expand from one to two sections next year. We're adding more Honors Option classes, so next year, we're expanding this to English 11. Our hope was to expand quickly, but we found very, very much from the teachers that if we expanded too quickly, they weren't ready for it. They needed more guidance. They asked for help. We tried to go to another school district, Red Bank, to see, because they were trying an Honors Option. We couldn't. It had failed, okay? They tried it with a couple of years. They tried to institute it at the freshman level and basically ended up with a revolt, and the teachers didn't want to do it anymore. So, we're starting it at the 11th grade. Once the students have matured a little bit, we're pushing them at a situation where they know that what they're doing means something much more for their future. They're much more aware of it in their junior year, and they recognize that doing the extra work is going to get them farther. I sat in a, actually, a US II Honors Option course this year, and I watched as some of the students laughed at the Honors Option students for doing more work, okay? So, what the teachers did is basically asked the supervisors, "How do we change some of this? How do we change the mindset so they really understand?" And that's where the district administration has really been working with the HPA, as Dr. Taylor said, to really solidify the fact that we're not going to just throw you into this and say, "Just make it happen." And with that, I'm going to hand it to Dr. Nikosia and Ms. Fittipaldi, who actually...
But I just want to point out something, that the, what you're about to learn more about from the supervisors is pioneering. We have not found a replicable model on which to base our problems and how they've been solved. We've, you know, this, this, a lot of this work came out of Carol Burris's work in Rockville Center, Southside High School, but I don't believe that even they have come up with some of these details that you're about to learn. So, I, well, I don't mean to put you on a high pedestal, but you, from which you could fall, but I think it's important that everybody knows, this is new stuff. I mean, I, we don't know of any other model in the state right now that's, that's going in this direction.
I just want to echo that. The work that they're doing is cutting-edge, okay? The work that our teachers are doing with them is cutting-edge. And our teachers ask, "Please help us," okay? And these ladies have done just that.
Wow, that's a big introduction, yeah. So, like Mike was saying, Christina and I have just wanted to be really supportive through this whole process, and that's our number-one goal. So, in order to figure out where we were heading, we kind of wanted to reflect on what had happened. So, we had done a lot of student surveys, parent surveys. We actually met and had a focus group with the English teachers and the social studies teachers. We wanted to understand what their philosophy was when it came to Honors work, when it came to students opting into Honors. What did it mean to them? And we had some really great information, which actually just drove our philosophical drive. All students should have an equal opportunity to earn Honors Distinction throughout a course. So, what that's going to mean for our Honors Option going forward is it's not going to be an option. It's going to be an Honors Distinction. It's going to be something they're going to earn. So, we're not going to have them opt into the Honors Option at the first marking period, right? Because we want to give them a chance to challenge themselves. We want to give them a chance to find an interest that they love, that they can excel in, which may not happen until the third marking period. There was a student who actually expressed this to me walking down the hallway. She said, "You know, I would have done the US II Honors Option, but I just couldn't prioritize it at the time to get it done with the other essays I had to do and the other work I had to do." And she's like, "So, I didn't." So, now she's not challenging herself this, this year. She is going on and doing her, you know, college prep, and actually, we're trying to coin the phrase academic instead of college prep as we move forward with the Honors Distinction as well. So, it was really important to us to make sure that this became available to everybody. Students were choosing their own learning paths. Students were challenging themselves, and students really had the chance to excel in their areas of interest. So, this is where our, our drive came from. So, we have been working with Mr. Lassiter, members of the leadership team, Mr. McCray and Mr. Broadfoot, because Mr. McCray will be doing the English, the Honors Option or Honors Distinction, and Mr. Broadfoot's going to continue his work with US History, too. So, Christina and I have worked in creating a course framework and what we want this course to look like, because we realize that this is going to be a different way of teaching. We're going to have more small group work. We're going to have more students working collaboratively, independently. We're going to have more emphasis on Google Classroom and pushing out different assignments, whether they're Honors or, or academic, as we're going to call them. And the biggest thing is professional development. So, we've been working with Mr. McCray and Mr. Broadfoot on setting up some learning goals, learning objectives, and our first PD with them will be on assessment design, because that's where we need to start, from the top and work our way backwards. And that's about what we've been doing now during the spring. During the summer, we've slated for curriculum work, excuse me, to develop a scope and sequence for the course. And that's going to be a really set framework for them, where we're going to have clear and measurable goals, clear and measurable learning, learning objectives, as well as creating the assignments and the assessments for them. We're trying to plan out most of the year, but we're going to be realistic. We may not make it through most of the year, but we're going to try our best to make it so that they have at least half the year planned out. So, when it comes to the actual teaching, they're going to be really the facilitators of learning. The students are going to be the ones choosing their assignments and choosing their learning path, and they're going to be there for feedback and facilitating. And then, for the 1920 school year, we are excited to start with both of the classes. Again, professional development is huge for Christina and I. We are going to be there to support them. We've already committed to regular check-ins with the teachers. Our PLC times with them are going to be spent talking about what's going on, what are the challenges, what are the, what are the strengths, what's, what's really happening. And that's going to drive the rest of our professional development, because we're not totally sure what's going to happen. We are, we are excited, and we have a lot of great ideas, but we also need to know that there are going to be bumps in the road. And that's why we are committing ourselves for regular check-ins with them and PLC time with them. And again, we've talked that professional development is really super important to making this work well. So, some of our ideas that we've come up with for professional learning are establishing that classroom culture, right? This is going to look differently for all the students. And like Mr. Lassiter was saying about the other students laughing and saying, "Oh, they're just doing more work." We don't obviously want that. You know, how are we creating a culture in the classroom where students are really challenging themselves? Students are feeling empowered by their learning, and this is what's really important for us. Providing feedback. Again, if we're able to scope out most of their units and assignments and assessments for the year, they are going to be responsible for providing timely, productive feedback for the students that they can use right away to change their learning. And this is, again, really important for this model to work. Differentiate instruction. Our teachers are going to be working with a variety of learners, and we want them to be able to use mini lessons, small group instruction, independent work. And this might look different than the classrooms are used to. So, I think it's really important for us to, them to have the PD where they are really being able to meet all their learners. And assessment design is crucial. So, that is going to be our first professional development coming up in the, in the spring so that we can really look at the courses as a whole, figure out how the students are going to learn and how they're going to earn their Honors Distinction by the end of the year.
And just to piggyback on that, the Board of Ed Curriculum Committee received some of our documentation that we created in support of the program that's been shared with the teachers and with administration. And what we want to reiterate is, what is actually really unique, besides the fact that it's a distinction, you earn honors, you don't just place into an Honors class that you earn it, is that all of the assessments and learning opportunities that students exhibit in the class will be aligned to the objective and assessed toward the objective. So, that's a little bit different from a traditional grading where I do homework is a grade, classwork is a grade, tests are a grade. We're doing a little bit of a different mantra in that it's based on the objective. What was the goal? If the goal is to construct an argument, then the students need to receive feedback from that argument and then how are they assessed on their ability to do that? So we are also looking at 21st century skills, the soft skills, to be evaluated as well, to be assessed. How are they at being collaborative, at being globally aware citizens, information literate researchers, those P21 soft skills, those 21st century competencies? So all that will be mapped out. So even grading to an extent will look a little bit different because they have an option. So the idea is the students will get a rubric and for that objective, so if they're constructing an argument. Everybody has to meet the minimum. The minimum standard in any curriculum is the standard, right? That is the minimum that you have to meet. So that would be, that would be the college prep level. So everyone's doing the college prep level. And then do you go deeper into that and to what extent does your argument go deeper? That takes you to the honors side. So we're talking about, again, doing that, we found in our conversations, that most people's perceptions of honors was that it was more work. More work. And we kind of reflected on that, like, but it shouldn't be. More work and faster pace. More work, faster pace. And we were thinking about it and we're like, well, but if they're going deeper, which everybody said as well, deeper into the content, if they're going deeper, wouldn't that be slower? Because they're going deeper? So again, we, we, we just try to push back a little bit against the norm to try to create something that's going to work best for all students. So that's why it's a little out of the box, but we think that it'll provide more options for students, the special ed student that put, you know, pulled Ms. Fittipaldi aside in the hallway and said, I would have done it, but... And we lost that student to potentially achieve at a capacity in which the student was able to. So we want to prevent that. We want all students to say, okay, in October, I'm having a rough month, I, you know, I'm going to do these options because I've got a lot going on, but next month, oh, I really love, you know, civil rights and, and all of that. I really want to push myself here. So it gives them that flexibility to do that. So we're really excited to present this to you.
Any questions?
I mean, finally, like, here's like the growth mindset that you've talked about when my kids went third, second grade, fourth grade, whatever it was when they had you, first grade? First grade! Wow, was it that long ago? I feel like it must have been more recent. But I mean, really, like, the, the students, it's not just like I placed into it or I didn't place into it. I'm honors or I'm not honors. I mean, this is fantastic. I, I just, I love that you had a response from a student and you had sort of adjusted the program. Thank you.
You're welcome. And Christina and I, like we said, we, we went back and forth. I mean, this was a lot of blood, sweat and tears, to be honest.
Oh, my God, I can't imagine. It's so much more complicated than I realized.
Well, just because we, like you said, deeper, faster, slower, we, we questioned everything. The grading took us weeks to come up with. So, but that student was instrumental in a ton of things, so kudos to her.
And I think the other really important part is the collaborative nature, the really working with administrators, really working with teachers and, and students and parents and figuring out how this is going to really work in the real world, in real classrooms. That's huge, you know, because I think one of the board's biggest frustrations over the years is kind of what Mike, when I were kind of just jokingly alluding to, is pace of change, right? We see something we want to fix, we want it fixed now, if even better yesterday, you know? But I think what we're learning through all these big initiatives that we're taking on is that slow, deliberate, methodical approach to things is what makes things work. Because there's nothing worse for teachers in a classroom than to have initiatives come down on them that they haven't had any say in or for students also to be in a, in a similar situation. So I love that this is kind of, it's taking a long time, but it's being done in a very thoughtful, deliberative manner. So I think that's fantastic.
Could I, could I add to that? This is an initiative that came out of the same board concerns about tracking and getting students in the same classrooms. And it's kind of easy for us to say, it's not easy, but I mean, it's easy to, to say, let's try this kind of program. It's different, it's new, it'll be interesting. But the, the hard work is done out there and so it's, and, and it's, it's all of you folks that are standing right now, you know, Scott and Mike and, you know, our supervisors. It's fantastic. Also though, the teachers and the HPEA came forward and Keith brought some of the teachers in, the History 2 honors option class, who were very concerned about trying to fit this into the traditional mode of teaching. And listening to that and understanding the concerns about doing it that way really, really was clear that the professional development and a new way of looking at it was needed. So I'm just so happy that you're going in this direction and, and happy that we were able to talk to the HPEA and talk to those teachers and come up with a method of doing it and a method that really works for everybody. So thank you all and thanks, thanks to the HPEA and those teachers. It's really fantastic.
Thank you.
Beyond the two classes that we, the one class that we've done so far and the class that we're doing for next year, do we have anything looking forward onto what classes we are proposing to expand moving forward? And then also, how are we selecting those courses? Are we looking at diversity in the classroom or are we just looking at like class sizes? Or, you know, how are, how are we making the determinations on what classes are reviewed for this kind of change?
So I'll let Mr. Lassiter speak more to that, but from, I work with the science teachers all the time and math, obviously, but the, I've already sort of pinpointed Mr. Marks, our new and amazing physics teacher, who might be interested in expanding into our physics program as well as our environmental earth and sustainability classes as well. So because he does a lot of differentiation inherently in those classes, he's building a repertoire of stuff that when I presented this to him, he's super on board. So I've, you know, kind of looked to identify some teachers that, you know, might be really interested, that have the capacity, that want to do it. So from the STEM end, I've definitely been trying to tap some teachers on the shoulders.
Glad you said physics because that's been a sore point for me for a while because there's no honors physics.
And, and that's the exact situation. But the willingness, the desire, the repertoire of the teacher, I think, is critical. Okay? This can't be just, here, you're doing this. Okay? And when we did it and everyone said, oh, this is a great idea and people wanted to jump on board, they very quickly jumped back when they realized how much work it actually is. Okay? And, and that's what happened. Okay? We weren't able to expand as quickly as we wanted, even though I felt the ground swell when teachers started to say, this would be a new way of really engaging the kids. Okay? Without the structure, though, they realized, I, I don't have the time to figure this out. I need help. Okay? In our world language classes, just remember, third level, fourth level, fifth level world language classes are already mixed honors and regular level in the same room. So it's already going on in the world language department. Additionally, to echo some, some STEM opportunities, we now have sophomores taking AP Chem. We never did that before. We provided them the scaffolding, the summer opportunities, a roadmap of how they could, go ahead, take on AP Chem your sophomore year, don't just take the honors or regular level chemistry. And the kids are flourishing. Okay? And so the more opportunities we provide for them, the more the teachers drive it, feeling they have the resources and the support to do it, the more success we'll have.
Can I add, can I, oh, sorry, I have a question or a comment, I guess, to that point. Because I think a lot of parents will be concerned that their child who may want to excel won't have those opportunities. So this is an important, I think, part of the program to emphasize and to communicate to parents, you know, where there are room, where there's room for growth for their child and how, what the pathways actually are, not just for the children, but also for the families who are also a part of this process and understanding it as well.
And so that's definitely something that's very much done in the guidance. And once the English rolls this out, they'll, it will be communicated to all those, those families. We just got to the point where we were able to really say, yes, we're ready to do this and take this forward. But they're definitely part of that process.
I, I just want to probably repeat, like, for the 10th time. First of all, I think it's great that, you know, we're taking it slow, even though it wasn't my preference. But, you know, it is a great comfort that it's catching on, you know, that it's not rejected wholesale and that it's catching on. The one thing that I keep bumping up against with the issue of de-tracking is scheduling. Not at the middle school, but at the high school. And I know that, you know, that's like your favorite topic.
Oh, I love that topic. I seriously do. That's 99% of my job.
No, I know. And it's incredible. I mean, personally for me, it would be a nightmare to have to figure that out. It's just not my thing. But I know that having, you know, being the mother of a senior, my kid has had four different, excuse me, four different schedule templates? I don't know. And every year, it's like, you know, trying to relearn and I know that, so this is why I appreciate all the work, trying to get the right schedule for everyone's needs. I know that through parenting my two high schoolers thus far, there's like a de facto tracking system that's really hard to avoid. And I know that it's on the radar, but I just, I, I want to make sure that we keep it on the radar, knowing that as many different things as we can do with honors option and, you know, encouraging kids to try hard, that they are in these like very small cohorts where there are 30 kids for most of the day that stay together. And so it's just a concern, you know, because I know that we're trying to move away from that kind of thing where, you know, school within a school model. Scheduling, I totally appreciate what a nightmare must be, but I know that it's important for us to remember that that's keeping us from making progress, I think. Because it is hard to break out of those things. If you have the option to do a class that you want to do, it works out in your schedule. If not, it doesn't, but you are in your basic courses with the same group all day. So...
This could really help with that, right?
This could help, absolutely.
Now I can take honors math and like, and regular academic English.
Yeah, I mean, eventually...
Kind of not forced into all honors or forced into all regular.
Right. But even at the same time, it feels like if you choose one honors course, you're kind of with, it's hard to move classes around. It's hard to describe even, you know?
I know exactly what you're talking about and you're exactly right. Once you structure the schedule, I build the schedule by laying out all the special ed courses and all the ICR courses and making sure that there, there's no conflicts. Then I lay out all the AP courses and try to prevent what I think will be the most normal conflicts until I have a kid that wants to take AP Spanish and AP French the same year. Who go figure. I'm sorry, can't make it happen. We'll figure it out. We got to do something else. But in regards to the honors distinction, the more we can expand it, the more likely we will de-track. Okay? And both Mr. McCray and Mr. Broadfoot, to their credit, absolutely know this. And that's one of their main reasons they want to do this. AP is AP. AP will always be AP. But any other English or, or humanities level course, and hopefully the science courses that you take, should not be tracked. You should be in the courses with other students of the same age, working together, and some of you are going to get it quicker. Some of you are going to be able to dive deeper and understand more complex things. And how you work that out as a community of learners is critical. And that's why we've never, and I'm a social studies teacher, everybody knows, made world history on the ninth grade level a tracked course. We tried it one year and I really believe the teachers like doomed it to failure because they did not believe that it should occur and it was forced on them. Okay? I'm a middle school educator. I believe on the high school level, no, all the kids need to be mixed together. We work together as a community and if you can get the concepts at a deeper level, show that. And as long as the teachers are challenging you, you'll learn.
So as someone who took AP Chem this year with the new sophomore addition, I can say that the program itself is not great because the way it worked is that, so people, so I have taken honors chem sophomore year and even though it's like a year between, I still remember most of this stuff, but they came in, even though they had the summer course, they came in with basically no knowledge about anything. The first quarter was terrible and then they, they never like...
Let's be, let's be careful insulting fellow students.
I'm not insulting them.
It's, it's sounding a tiny bit.
Sorry, but like...
It's sounding a tiny bit that way.
It's just, they didn't really understand the material and so throughout the entire year, it's just been a year of review for me, even though I haven't done anything extra outside of school, outside of honors chem to study chemistry itself, it's just been review for me. And I don't think that that's a great course, especially considering that it's supposed to be a step above honors chem, the fact that we've just been doing basically the same exact concepts, the same exact materials. So I don't believe that, well, I do think that it's important to let students do what classes that they want to do. It's important to have a prerequisite or at least a baseline level that they have to be at before they go into a high level course. For example, you wouldn't let someone without any pre-calc knowledge or algebra knowledge go into Calc BC.
Nobody's talking about doing that, I don't think. No. So have you told the teacher about your frustrations? I mean, I wonder if the teacher is aware of how frustrated, you know, some of the students are. I mean, they may not be aware.
So I haven't personally talked to Ms. Fittipaldi.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
But, oh, she's out, so I'm not able to talk to her.
I have a question.
Then it would be impossible.
I do have a question. Zayu, are you talking about AP? Did you say AP class?
AP Chem, yeah.
Because I thought that there was a required curriculum that has to be followed for AP.
There is.
Okay. So I don't understand why that is not, why that wouldn't be happening, right? If you have a required curriculum, that has to be taught. So are you beyond that maybe? I, I just don't understand. Maybe you are beyond that.
I'm, honestly, my chemistry is, it's decent, but I haven't done anything extra outside of honors chem. Or like, I did study for the SAT chem, but that's not really much, but...
Okay, I guess a little off topic here, talking about your chemistry abilities.
But I guess, I guess, yeah, hold on. I think the point I'm making is just that I think you were suggesting that the course is not as demanding as it should be. But I think AP has very stringent requirements about what is taught and what the expectations are. So is that, that has to be happening.
And I do believe our AP scores are very strong, which is why we were considered, I think we're on the AP College honor roll and why we are ranked usually high on the US News and World Reports list, which relies a lot on AP scores. So I think, I think the record's there. I mean, I, I think it's also showing the results.
I mean, I think if you're like extremely gifted in chemistry, it must, it is difficult. I mean, I have a son who's extremely gifted in math and he's poor a lot of the time. And I, I hope that as he grows older, he'll be able to, you know, make clear to a teacher, listen, I want to go deeper into this subject. I realize that as a kid, that's not easy and he's not doing it now. But I also don't expect the teacher to sort of be teaching like double AP, you know, math for my kid. I mean, I wonder if there's a, if there's a way to like talk to the teacher one-on-one. I, I'm sorry, I don't mean, I mean...
I don't want to go too deep here.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, I, I think what you're talking about is like there's a differentiation problem. Like there, you know, you're at a very advanced level and the teacher's maybe not adjusting for that. So, so that's something that we can talk about, I think. I don't know if it's a problem with the course.
Well, I, I do want to circle back to...
Yeah.
...the honors with distinction program. Are there any remaining questions? If not, and of course...
I just want to thank you all. I mean, I really liked this presentation. I wonder if I could get, or if we could all get...
Oh, yeah.
...the presentation sent to us.
I think it is in the folder.
It's on the drive.
Oh, is it? Yeah. We knew that. We knew that all along.
I wonder, if I could ask one, one thing. In the early part of it, we were looking at percentages of the makeup of the class and then we went to raw numbers. So that, I don't know, I'm weird. That bothered me because we were kind of talking about a percentage.
The percentages would have been helpful there, for sure.
If, yeah. So if, if we could maybe update that so that it, so it's consistent as we go from one to the next.
So next year, we'll see that, how the percentages change.
Yeah.
Well, so that you're comparing if you have, let's say, 15% or 10 and a half percent in, in each color area or 52% or whatever it is, we're not going 52 and then we're going to 26 kids.
Right.
We want to be able to, to have a consistent measurement. And I think that would be helpful going forward as well.
I had another, another equal kind of comment. Could we email these to you, Scott? These small math concerns?
They're small. I mean, it's just picky un, I guess.
Charred kind of concerns, data concerns.
Yeah.
Just to pass on. I mean, I could send it to Christina, but.
We all love data here, so.
Absolutely.
What did you get into like that?
I would also.
No, but it is really helpful, and it's one of the.
It's great, yeah.
And again, again, this is fantastic, and this is exactly where we want to be headed. And we want to be motivating the kids to reach the highest that they can get to.
And when we first started talking about doing this as a board, and we got some pushback from parents who were concerned that this would mean that we were going to be dumbing down programs and all these things, this is one of the things that we promised that we would do, that we would be looking at this on a yearly basis. And we really do need to be able to make sure we're comparing apples to apples from year to year and really looking at what direction this is going. So I think the more, like from year to year, we can kind of standardize the way we look at the data, the easier it'll be to do that comparison and use that to, you know, help reassure any, you know, any student or parent concerns that we're moving in a positive direction for students.
Absolutely.
We're helping, we're helping move this, doing what we want to do, right? We're helping the students at the bottom move up, and we're not making the students at the top move down.
Exactly.
Like not trying to get everybody to the middle. What we're trying to do is.
It comes back to that equity versus equality graphic, which most of us are aware of. I'm really, really proud of my leadership team. Thank you so much. I really do appreciate all the hard work they're putting in. So go home, go home. Mike has another night out tomorrow night. And then I think Mike will be back next Monday. We're going to see Mr. Lassiter again Monday night. That's the conclusion of my lengthy report.
All right. Okay, so we are going to move on to our committee reports. That puts you up on deck first, Michelle.
Okay, so I'm going to circle back. I'm going to start with number two and three, go on to three, and then I'm going to go back to number one.
Do what you need to do.
Yeah. So number two is a resolution to approve the field trip requests as per the attached. Number three is a resolution to approve the HIB incident report for the month of April. And those are two incidents.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
That's number 18, 19, 13, and 18, 19, 14. Okay, so our committee report. So that's number one. We met on May 29, and we discussed just a few things, but pretty, pretty much in depth. So I'll try and go through as quickly as possible. So we discussed a change of the ELA time at Bartle because of budget constraints, really. But I think when Dr. Taylor presented this idea to me, he was probably assuming that I would be like not so happy that we were not spending so much time on ELA. As a parent, though, and, you know, being in the district for as long as my kids have been in school, I've never really been excited for them to be doing like blocks of work, you know, as young students. I always thought that, you know, more engaged students were probably more physical students, you know, up and out of the desk. So the change in the ELA time would affect desk time, which I was pretty happy about. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I have to add that in the last 72 hours over the weekend, I've had a lot of email exchanges with Susie Boudin, DDD Sherber, Rebecca Fittipaldi. We think we're going to actually be able to build some of that time back in, but it is going to be some less time. Not exorbitant, but some. And I have to talk to the Bartle staff about that after school tomorrow.
Sure, sure. Yeah, this was a preliminary discussion, obviously. But the change is due to the fact that, you know, because of our budget, we're not hiring, we're not hiring additional staff to ensure that students who have IEPs that require like a one-to-one support or other like special ed supports that might require new hires. It's not necessarily something that, you know, we have additional money to do, but it's also not necessarily something that we have to do, considering that we seem to be doing a lot of desk work for ELA. So.
I don't know that I followed that.
Yeah, I'm.
Oh, sorry.
Not following either.
Okay, so.
So is it meaning to reduce the amount of time that there would need to be push-ins in classrooms?
That's right.
Is that what you mean? But then what would that.
Additional time be replaced with?
I'm not prepared to make a full presentation about this yet because it is in flux, and I haven't talked to the teachers at length about it. It wasn't my intent to get to detail about this tonight, so if we could just wait until the next meeting, I can provide more information.
Yeah, yeah, this was a preliminary discussion. But the idea was that Bartle students in the ELA classes had a big chunk of time for ELA work. And my understanding was that that was a lot of desk work. That may or may not be the case. But that would be, the proposal was to slightly reduce that time so that there were other literacy activities or other ELA types of lessons, but it wasn't necessarily desk work that would require additional supports. So my understanding was that it was a budget constraint that began the process, but the conversation kind of morphed into how can we meet the needs without additional desk time? But this was a preliminary discussion, and obviously it's still in the works. So we spent the most time actually talking about item number three on our committee agenda, which was the health curriculum for grades nine through 12. So we talked about lesson planning, and we had some suggested lesson plans that we were reviewing. And the alignment to the curricula is accurate, but the discussion that we had was basically seeing if we could adopt a curriculum and align the lessons to be as comprehensive as possible. So, yeah, we went into some detail there. I'll skip all of that, though, and we'll go to number four on the agenda, on the curriculum committee agenda, which was the home economics curriculum integration. So we talked about the possibilities for breaking out concepts in the current home ec curriculum and making, making adjustments to other areas of curricula so that we could include some of those home ec lessons. And really, I think that's about it for the committee report. So that's it.
All right. Did anybody have questions?
I'm sure you did.
Can I do that correctly? Can anybody?
I had a quick question, just the home ec component, because I'm sorry, I wasn't at the meeting. Was that pertaining to the loss of?
Yes.
Okay.
So being that we lost that curriculum, that program entirely, the discussion was centered around how can we salvage parts of the curriculum and kind of integrate them into areas elsewhere? So, you know, for example, math lessons around measurement, recipes, that type of thing. It's a very elementary example, but ways in which that we could, you know, we could integrate some necessary skills. We didn't want to have to lose that program.
Any other questions for Michelle? Is my best Darcy voice? Okay. Mark, could we please have the finance committee report?
Thank you.
I think that's pretty good.
Okay, so for the finance committee, we did not meet this week on, in our committee. We've had so many committee meetings over the last few months. I think they were all committed out. So we'll, we'll pass until next time. Item two is the usual bill list, the general bill list, athletic bill list, and cafeteria bill list. Item three is the travel and expense reimbursements. Item four are various contractors for the 2019-20 school year. Numbers one, three, and five, as you can see, are nursing services, Biata Home Health, Maxim Healthcare, and Starlight Home Care. So those three are nursing services. Advocate is a firm that monitors our maintenance contracts effectively to see that we're not being overcharged by our maintenance contractor, which, you know, it's a multimillion dollar contract. So we pay them to monitor this, and this is, every year, money very well spent. SD Game Day is athletic training services. And then Trinitas Children's Therapy is for occupational and, and physical therapy services. Item five is our resolution to approve the submission of our application for extraordinary aid for the 2018-19 school year. And this money, we typically see about 50% of the amount that we apply for.
But there is talk of more, even more money than the $5 million that was originally announced.
Really?
I think that latest number was like 50 or something, so.
Even that sadly.
That's the part they keep talking about putting into the budget changes, so.
No, no, but I mean, even.
Fingers crossed.
Even sadly, if they do that, we'll get, instead of 50, we'll get 55. I mean, any, every penny counts.
If we get an extra $100,000, $100,000, I'll take it.
Every penny counts, but it's really depressing. Item six is the contract for our food services management to Pomtonian. They were the only company to submit a proposal, and we appear to be likely to have some profits on this, on this account. Item seven is the renewal of Phoenix Advisors, who provide bond issue disclosure and reporting services required by law. And this is $1,000 for doing that, those services for us. Item eight is the renewal of BKC. Those are our CPAs, who provide us that very large book once a year. And Mr. Colin Tano and his colleague, whose name I don't remember, visit and, and explain the important points of the 400-page report to us. And put a lot of work in. And they're really, really good and competent, and it's, it's always good to see them because we know we're, we're moving forward in good financial order. Items nine through 12, a resolution to transfer to various reserves. And I'll paraphrase, in the unlikely event we have more money left over than the million that we have to transfer into next year. So the million is the surplus that we, so we, you know, we haven't budgeted every penny. You know, in case of emergencies, we have to have some left. So we budget what we appear, appears to be left over, which we hope this year will be approximately a million, and that's needed for next year's budget. But in the event some additional money is left over, this is a resolution that allows us to transfer those to replenish some of our reserves, which we will have spent down, particularly on capital programs, which we've been talking about. Items 12 and 13 allow, allow, or authorize our business administrator to continue regular business operations during the summer when board meetings are less frequent. Item 14 and 15, item 14 is changes, two changes to out-of-district placements at the very end of the year, well, not exactly the end, but one starting May 13th and the other starting retroactive to February. And then item 15 is the summer extended school year out-of-district programs per some of these students' IEPs. Some of which, as you can see, someone pointed out to me earlier, are very large numbers for the summer only. This gives you an idea, again, of the kind of costs that we have that are not, going back to the extraordinary aid that we're going to get 50% of. This is the money that we're spending, and we apply for extraordinary aid. Because these numbers are so high, and the state gives us back 50% of their already low 25 or 30% of the total. So we're taking it on the chin on all levels. Item 16 is the renewal of our membership in the New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletic Association. Items 17 and 18 are the annual summer refinishing of wooden floors around the district. In this case, it's the high school gym floor. And, wait, hold on a moment. It says high school, one report, and this says Bartle. Linda, on number 18, is that, is that for the Bartle or, or high school?
No, it's one of each. The wooden gym floor in the high school and the stage floor in Bartle.
Ah, okay, thank you. Right, 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 okay. Item 19 and 20 are replacement of window balancers in classroom, 34 classrooms at Irving. And then there'll be resolution 20 to give that to the winning bid. And then items 21 and 22 are replacement of carpeting with vinyl tiles, vinyl tile flooring in two of the classrooms at the high school. And again, we have a winning bid, and that'll, that'll be done by, again, T3 Maintenance and Construction of Parsipanee. And that is the full report.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Mark on any of those items? No? Okay, we'll move on to personnel then with Ann.
Okay, let me find my agenda. We met, I think it was last Thursday, the 30th. We didn't talk about anything that was non-confidential and not on the agenda. So the agenda pretty well captures what was discussed at our meeting. I just lost my place. It's pretty self-explanatory. I'm not going to go through each thing, but again, this is the time of year where we have a lot of personnel changes, people resigning, people leaving, people coming, new hires. So we have some, a number of medical and maternity and childcare disability leaves. We have some resignations. Scott, I think was going to talk about some of the new hires. Let me leave those for last.
I'll be.
If you don't mind, I'll, let's see, go through the other things that are not new hires. We have some transfers, transfers, transfer, transfers. We are going to continue employing Linda Hofela, thank God, she's decided to stay with us again for another year.
Yay.
Some overtime hours, home, bed, home, home instruction slash bedside instructors. Let's see, sorry, some chaperones. Yeah, that's it. So it's basically self-explanatory, and there's nothing terribly exciting discussed at our Thursday, May 30th meeting, except for stuff that's sort of confidential, not appropriately appropriate to read here or is on the agenda. I know Scott wanted to talk about the number of the new hires.
I always like to pull out a couple of highlights about each individual. I meet with every finalist before I recommend him or her to the board. So Joe Gonzalez-Goldstein, I'm recommending at number six. The agenda be the new Irving guidance counselor. Her references were phenomenal. Highlights, the principal in Princeton, under whom she worked, said that she treats each child as a holistic person. Very strong parental connections. In fact, she goes out to the PTO meetings and makes sure she incorporates some kind of a brief media lesson for parents during those meetings. Was wonderful, and in Princeton, warm, kind, caring. And I got that vibe, too, of course, when I met her. Number seven is my recommendation to have Nah Pham be the new school nurse to replace very big shoes Nurse Lifer. So I got an email, actually, ahead of my interview with Nah, from Rick Cohen, who was the assistant superintendent in Metatchen, and also my partner in social, emotional, learning, crime. He, he gave me the heads up. She was a replacement nurse in Metatchen. This would be a permanent position, of course, that I'm recommending her for. She's been wonderful, according to Rick. Unfortunately, they didn't have an opening. If we did, he'd hire her in a second without hesitation. And she, he hates to have her walk out of the district, but he has no choice because she was just there on a temporary leave. Number eight, Jennifer Housward, is very interesting for a number of reasons, one of which is the fact that she is the first head college athletic coach I've ever hired. So she's actually the head bowling coach at St. Peter's University for the girls' team. They're Division One, by the way. So perhaps we'll have a bowling team before you know. What I, I mean, she was fantastic. She was recommended to me as a top choice by the high school team that met with her. But lo and behold, she is finishing her training for teen pep certification.
Yay.
Wow, that's great.
So we obviously have been devastated by the unfortunate loss of Terry Mitchell. However, we do need somebody to fill her big shoes in teen pep to work alongside Elizabeth Batasimoa, so Jennifer will fit nicely into that role. Leanne Chambers, number nine, is my recommendation to fill Leanne Matthews' position. Leanne left us to go to Bridgewater to be a quasi-administrator, coach. Back in the fall, we hadn't been able to find somebody qualified. Leanne's actually a paraprofessional for us right now. Very, very high quality, held in very high regard at Irving, and she's been looking for positions. This is a great way for her to step into those shoes. Number 10, Dana Peterson will be the new pending board approval, high school guidance counselor. She is so, such a go-getter. She excitedly called Mr. Lassiter after I offered her the position pending board approval. And then she followed up with texts, and all she wants to do is jump right in. Of course, she's asked if she can shadow some of the current counselors and whatnot. So we're really excited that she's so excited. The other individuals who I'm recommending are not new. They're either paraprofessional transfers. If you have any questions about the transfers, please let me know. But I did explain them to the personnel committee. That's it for now. I'll have a couple of more recommendations on next Monday night's meeting. A meeting with a school psychologist and LDT C finalist, so I hope to recommend them to you next week.
Great.
Wonderful. That concludes my report.
All right. Any. Any questions for Ann or Scott on any of the personnel items?
I have a quick question because I just happened to mention to the Board of Health that we had a resignation at Bardo at the nurse's office. And then I see that, because I'm not on the personnel committee, I didn't know this until tonight, that we're moving the middle school nurse to Bardo. So who would be taking the middle school?
So we have an opening now for middle school nurse. In fact, our openings now include, if I can get this straight, there's so many moving pieces, people residing at last minute, so we have a middle school nurse position opening. We have a special education opening at Bardo, permanent. Right now, that's it for permanent positions. We have some maternity leaves that we'll be looking for too, and a couple of paraprofessional openings still. But all those postings have been publicized internally and they're also on NJSchoolJobs.com and on our website.
Yeah, I did see the middle school opening and I thought, oh, do we have another opening? Okay.
No, no, no. Yeah, so Kim will be going to Bardo.
Thank you.
Okay. If there isn't anything else for Ann, thank you, Ann, and we'll move on to policies with Mark.
Yes, thank you. So we met on, we met on May 29th. We first briefly discussed the Strauss Esme audit, which has really three parts to it. Missing policies, policies with incorrect citations to New Jersey law, and policies which are out of date. So we had taken those and put them into three buckets. Susan got the list of citations, reviewed them, and only one of them actually had an incorrect citation. So like a dozen potential problems disappeared. And the list, what we're trying to do is whittle that list down and it's gotten, the full list, it's gotten way smaller. The missings are about a dozen. We're going to go through those and review, review those to see what we, what's mandatory, what isn't, what we want to have, what we don't want to have, and put them in a form that's acceptable to the district. So that'll get rid of a whole lot, again, of other missing ones, which seem to me and to others on the committee as really the worst kind of offenders to not have a policy at all. So we're doing those next and then we'll be reviewing the others in order of the ones with needing updates in the order of most, obviously most important to least important. We reviewed, we have what's called regulations, which are not policies, but I guess more of an administrative goals or something, but they're regulations. And we have a regulation 5200 on attendance. We looked at it for a few minutes and Scott is bringing that to the administration. They're going to review it because it's regulations for their operation. And then we'll get that back and we'll review it for the whole board. We reviewed the forms for the Chromebook loaner use and optional insurance. We got some questions to Christina and she's working on those now, so we can, we can go over those as needed. We reviewed the policy on school provided technology, which is 7523, and we, and that's appearing first reading tonight and, or to review for voting on first reading next time. And also the use of privately owned technology, which needs admin review. And again, Christina is going to look at that. That's the policy on the equipment that we're actually loaning, the new Chromebooks. And then the item 2540, which is complaints regarding instructional materials, had a minor change or two. That's on the agenda tonight. And then there's one other about the open lunch, which was a missing policy, which we reviewed briefly, and we're going to review that again. So that was our committee meeting. Today, there are three policies on, for first reading, and again, that's at the next meeting, and then three policies for second reading. But I've had some suggestions for changes, which I'd like to bring up. So the complaints regarding, complaints regarding instructional materials, we did make some changes, but Chris pointed out in the last paragraph of that, a better set of wording that matches another change we made, which is "The final decision on controversial instructional materials shall rest with the board after careful examination and discussion of the instructional materials with school officials or others the board may wish to involve." Point being, we're using reading matter in one place, which we had just crossed out, and instructional materials in the other, so let's make them consistent. So unless there's objections, I'm going to get those changes to Susan tomorrow morning. And then item, the item number B, which is 4152, that's there because there was an incorrect New Jersey citation, New Jersey law incorrect citation. That's crossed out. It's, there's no substantive change to it, but it has the correct citation. And policies for second reading, 5200, 5230, I have no comments, but Ruth pointed out on 5561, let me get to that in my notes, two suggestions. So first, when we read this and we did read it or review it several times, it looked to us that this policy was not only about physical restraint and seclusion for students with disabilities, but it was simply the use of physical restraint and seclusion, period, not just for students with disabilities. Yet, in the first paragraph, we inadvertently left in toward the very end, well, I'll read the whole sentence, "On occasion during an emergency, a situation may arise making it necessary to temporarily restrain or seclude a student," and then it says "with a disability" in accordance with NJASA etcetera. We should strike the words "with a disability." So thank you, Ruth, for that. And then in the, in the, in the heading of this, we struck and seclusion, but we should leave that. I think we overdid it. It should read "use of physical restraint and seclusion techniques."
And it's the, the very top, right? We have it in bold as the title, but then the title is also in the upper right? That's got to be...
Yes, that has to get "with disabilities" has to change and "for students with disabilities" has to change. So those are the changes suggested by Ruth. I did read through it further and it's very thick and hard to read, but I could not find any other errors in there.
Mark, will you be making those changes on the Google Doc?
I'd rather just email Susan in the morning.
That would be fine.
Is that okay? For both the one Chris pointed out and the one Ruth pointed out?
That would be helpful.
And thank you guys for going over these. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So that's my report.
Okay, wonderful. Anybody have a question?
The only question I have is about that last one. And just reading through it, it appears that a lot of the discussion in it is about students with disabilities. So my only question is, is is this in fact the policy for physical restraint and seclusion techniques for all students? Or was it intended to be something separate?
We don't, I don't know. I don't know, but when we did discuss it, we did want it to be for all students. If you're going to physically restrain a student, let's have a policy. Maybe the state thinks we only have to have a policy. So when Ruth asked me the same question...
That's a great question. I can tell you that Mr. Harrison, using this as an example, are a safety specialist, has been trained in handle with care and other restraints that are often used, if necessary, in the case of special needs student.
But I asked myself the same question and when Ruth brought it up and when we talked about it previously, and I can't answer whether the state only requires one or the other, but it's more broad and I think it's better for the district. And I think the whole committee felt that. If we, if we include all students, if you have to restrain a student, they don't necessarily have an IEP and let's have some correct policy. And we did try to break it out elsewhere. I think it was just an oversight.
So it doesn't overlap with some other policy elsewhere?
No, not to my knowledge. I couldn't find one.
So, yeah, because you can certainly see if there's a fight or something like that, there could be the need to restrain a student and that has nothing to do, or, you know...
Right. And then they have words that says, "In the case of a student with an IEP, do the following." And I said, geez, let's, let's make it more broad.
I see, I think the other things that need to be, sorry, Ann, need to be looked at though, is that first sentence does talk about restrictive environment. And if we're not making this policy about students with disabilities, then maybe that part needs to be struck as well. And the first sentence just needs to be, "The Board of Education strives to provide a safe caring atmosphere that supports all students, period."
Period. I will, yeah, I'll, I agree with you.
And then also, I think then we'd have to make sure we're actually looking at those, that NJSA citation and making sure that does apply to all students and doesn't only apply to special education students. That would be my other question.
Okay, I will look at that. I'll look at that tomorrow.
Right, we're trying to make it apply to all students, but that code only...
Yep.
If the code is silent on that, I would, and it's left to the administration to make that recommendation to the board, I would just recommend that we do have it applied to all students and then take that phrase out.
Take the site out, yeah.
Regarding restrictive environment.
That's fair.
Well, but then I think, I think rather than just take it out, I think we'd probably want to talk to Strauss Esme and see if there are other citations that would apply. How my...
It seems like we should. I just, I know that Strauss Esme has kind of a, been back and forth about this. It used to apply to all students. That's the policy that we considered for years and years, 2014, 2015, 2016. Then they changed it and recommended it only apply to students with disabilities. So we tried to do some kind of weird merger. So that, that makes me think that perhaps there's nothing that applies to all students except what, not to make a long story really complicated, except for the statute they previously cited in the all students one, which was basically just saying, defining corporal punishment and saying, but there's some exceptions to that. So they, they've been really weird about it.
So maybe we need to cite both of those, though? You know, then maybe we need to cite the one about corporal punishment. I don't know. Oh, I'm sorry, it doesn't work that way. I'm sorry.
You have to go to the podium in a minute.
In one minute.
Almost there.
The, the New Jersey statutes are specific to students with disabilities.
They are, these.
Yeah, except for the one that they cited in the original restraint policy, which applied to all students.
I could change, I could change the wording and say something like, "In accordance with whatever NJASA blah blah for students with disabilities, in cases of students with disabilities." Oh, where it says now, "Making it necessary to temporarily restrain or seclude a student in accordance with NJASA etcetera," in that first paragraph, we could certainly change that to say, "In accordance with NJASA etcetera, only in cases of students with, or in cases of students with disabilities," or something, just to make it more specific. That those only apply to students with disabilities.
So there aren't guidelines, I'm sorry, Ruth, but there aren't guidelines for restraining students that don't have disabilities? That seems utterly bizarre.
Not that they've given us, but there may be some that they have not, Strauss Esme has not turned over to us.
I could try to find them somewhere before I give this back to, before I give this back to Susan and put some wording in that makes sense.
Right.
Yeah, I can do this tomorrow.
Okay.
Zero problem.
Okay.
Just the wording at the beginning of number three, remember I asked you about that also?
Yes.
"Staff members who are involved in the restraint or seclusion of a student shall receive training in safe techniques for physical restraint or seclusion." Like I'm reading that as, oh, if you happen to be involved in a restraint, then you, you're going to get the training after.
How about "shall have received"?
Shall have received.
Are students who may be involved in, who may be, I mean, they mean like, I'm sorry, they mean staff members who are in a position such that they may...
You may not touch a student if you have not received the training.
Right, right, that's what we want to say, yeah.
Yeah, so how do they say that effectively?
I'll change the sentence, I'll change the sentence also. I'm marking it up now. This is really complicated. I'm sorry, guys.
Well, because it's really important.
It's very important.
It's a super important policy.
There were versions of this going back four years, as Ann said, with drafts from Strauss Esme, drafts from Ruth, drafts from other boards.
Lobbying groups, or, you know, not nonprofits.
It's crazy, it's just crazy. This seems to be reasonable, finally.
Mostly.
But I'm happy to, I'm happy to make those changes and try to find if there's a policy for students who don't have disabilities.
Okay, awesome.
Monique, I think I interrupted you before. I'm sorry about that. Did you?
No, that question left my mind, but this one was about to Ruth's point about, so if this is a general policy now, which staff members are trained? Do we need more staff members trained? I mean, it just opens up that line of thinking as well, because if we're looking at this as more of a global policy.
I think there are quite a number of staff members who are trained.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
The people with care training seems to be on every agenda.
Yeah, yeah. So it is coverage.
Yeah, like Scott said, Mr. Harrison's trained at the high school. So I mean, our training has certainly gone beyond just staff members who interact with special education students, so.
That said, I'm surprised that we're doing all these trainings without a policy that already is in place for us to be following.
I know, I know.
So is there nothing in place right now? This would be a complete policy?
There's nothing.
Oh, we have nothing.
As far as I know, we have nothing.
I believe this, I believe we do not yet have a policy. I don't think this ever got passed.
No, we kept on thinking about it, thinking about it, then there were arguments. There were changes of administrative...
From well before, I'm not blaming anybody, but from well before our time.
Yeah, we had different administrators.
Drafts going back three, four, five, I mean, three, four, five years before I was and others were on the board.
Before Scott was here.
Yeah, before Scott was...
Finger pointing.
Finger pointing.
It's very hard. No, it's really hard. This is difficult.
There's a lot of...
It is.
It's a big policy binder.
Which is why years ago, we decided to not review the whole thing every two years because it just doesn't make sense.
You can't do that. It's insane.
Yeah, no, it's... Okay, all right. So if there aren't any other questions for Mark on the policies, move on to equity and excellence with Monique.
Right, we have not met since our last meeting. We are due to meet on June 12th.
Okay. And you do have a resolution on your agenda?
Yay.
We do.
Just the equity and excellence plan that we discussed at the last meeting.
Yes.
It's just a formality.
I forgot about that, I'm sorry.
The comprehensive equity plan?
Do I need to state that right now?
Yeah.
No, I mean, it's there, it's just, okay, good to point it out. And it is on the drive, I believe, for folks to reference.
Yeah, and I, and I know Monique talked about it last meeting because that's when it came up. This is just putting, probably putting on the agenda.
Okay. All right. So if there's nothing for Monique, we'll move on to public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. If anybody would like to come up to the podium and make public comment.
It's your turn.
Now's the time, finally.
Sorry about that.
Hours later. That was Monique. Sorry, it's from my...
Hello.
Hi, and I'm sorry, if I could just, there's a sign-in sheet right there. You don't have to do it the second, you can do it when you're done, but also then just state your name and where...
So my name is Liz Thomas and I have a son here, Seener, and he's disabled. He's autistic and he's part of the GLO program. Now, so I'm here because I'm so concerned because Mrs. June Miller, I was brought to my attention that she is being moved from the high school GLO program to the middle six, to the middle school GLO program. Now, the high school GLO program is a self-contained class, which she sees the kids every day. And it's my understanding that if she goes to the middle school, it's not a self-contained program, which she'll probably see the kids maybe once a week or so. I'm just here to plead. Mrs. Miller has done such a great job with these kids. I will hate to see her leave the high, the high school program just because the kids are, she has done such a great job. My son has came such a long way with what she does with this program. Kids, I can't speak for other kids, but I can speak for my son with the transition from her leaving, like, he's graduating on the 20th and he wants, I want him to come back until he's 21. But he was told that Mrs. Miller is no longer going to be running this program. And he said, well, if Ms. Miller is going to be there, I don't see a need for me to come back. And I said, Mark Anthony, no, you know, Mrs. Miller, she'll still be around. No, 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 you know, she's not going to be here. Why does she have to leave? Why can't she just stay? Can she just run both programs since one is self-contained and the other one is not self-contained? I mean, I'm quite sure you guys have to hire somebody to be, you have to pay for them to be trained. I mean, I'm quite sure they need certificates. She has all this. Why can't she do both programs? You know, like, I mean, I'm just here pleading. I'm really pleading. And she's, the program has done wonders for these kids.
I think almost all of us have visited the GLO program, yeah.
I can't speak for all the kids, I can speak for my child and I know what it has done for my child. And it's the best program. She's doing such a good job with them. I mean, she teach, she has taught him like so much. My son has come such a long way, but I just hate to see her go. I mean, I know you guys have a job to do. I'm just hoping that she could run both programs since, like I said, one is self-contained and the other one is not self-contained. You, again, you have to pay to get someone trained. You have to, you know, I mean, there's so much to do. I'm quite sure these people need, he or she will need certificates. He or she has to be trained. The kids have to get used to them. And it's just such a big transition that, you know, I'm just hoping that she could stay.
Your concerns are extremely valid and so are your sons.
Yes. He is like, I don't think I should come back here. be trained, the kids have to get used to them, and it's just such a big transition that, you know, I'm just hoping that she could stay.
Your concerns are extremely valid, and so are your sons.
Yes, he is, like, I don't think I should come back, and she's not going to be there.
The good news, though, the good news is, the individual who we have taken over the program, Ms. Pollak, has been working with Ms. Miller for a couple of years now.
Okay.
And when we had to make this decision, we, we felt we were getting like a twofer out of the deal. Ms. Miller's going to be helping us take the middle school program back to the way it was. It's, we've been absent of a teacher on that program for over half a year now.
Oh, wow.
But because we had Ms. Pollak, who's been with Ms. Miller for a couple of years now, essentially almost shadowing her, if not working closely with her, we feel like the transition would be much smoother than if we just brought somebody new in. However, what I think would behoove us is if we come up with a more effective transition plan for the kids in those last three weeks of school.
Yeah.
Yeah. It sounds good.
So I will take care of that promptly tomorrow morning.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Could I just say that I did visit the GLOW program a few months ago? They did bake pizza, and I sat there with Mr. Lassiter at the next table, and some other people I know, and I don't know the teachers at all, and I'm not going to talk about the teachers, but there were, by, by name, because I don't know, they really know their names, but I know that there were three or four professionals in that room, and to me, they all seemed wonderful, and the kids looked up to them, and it was a wonderful afternoon for all of us, and especially for the, for the kids in the program. And, you know, the board doesn't move people around, the administration does.
Okay.
So I didn't even know about this.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you know, you can read the fine print on everything, and, and I try, I'm not always successful, but I, I think from what Dr. Taylor is saying now, this seems like a, a, a good idea, and a reasonable thing to do to revitalize that program and, and keep on the good work in the high school program, which I saw again with three or four adults in the room, or four or five adults in the room, all of whom were wonderful with it, with the, with the students. They were amazing.
Everyone in that program is so good.
And this program is something for our district to look up to. It just seems so fantastic.
It really is, and the program really works.
It's fantastic.
I mean, it really works. My son is Mark Anthony Johnson, which I'm quite sure most of you know. And, yes, and the program really works.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Miller's just such a good teacher, I mean, and I just hate to see her leave.
But all this...
Is Ms. Pollak the one that did the yoga?
I'm sorry?
Is Ms. Pollak the one that did the yoga when we went on?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I, I got to say that, I was there for a yoga session before she started...
Yeah, Ms. Pollak is a really good teacher, too, I know.
Oh, she was, she was wonderful, I mean, it was amazing. She had all those kids paying attention, and everybody was engaged, even the adults, we weren't on our phones.
But all this time you waited paid off, because I really was not cognizant that, it appears we could do a better job with the transition.
Yes.
And we have three weeks with which to work, so...
No, and that's so huge, that's huge for everyone.
It's very big, you know, I mean, for kids with, like, my son.
Yeah.
He has a really big problem transitioning.
Of course.
And when he heard she was leaving, he was like, "Well, I'm not coming back, why am I coming back for her? She's not going to be there."
Oh.
I was like, "Oh, my God, how am I going to get him to understand?" And, you know, it's...
Thank, thank you for speaking up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And is there, is, like, the students talk a lot about, you know, the high school kids are going over to Irving. Is there that kind of, from lack of a better word, cross-pollination between, I would think that there would be collaboration between that high school and that middle school program, so that it's not like, you know, Ms. Miller is completely gone, you know, that sometimes those kids would all get together. You know, so that, but I mean, that the kids could some, the kids and the teachers...
Every single program is intact. It's going to stay that way next year, the community-based piece, the cross...
No, 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 but I mean also that the, that sometimes maybe those groups of students would actually...
Interact.
Interact.
Oh, absolutely, that would continue. I mean, the kids, the GLOW students at the high school will sometimes push down to the middle school and do work, and, and odd jobs that need to be done.
Yeah.
That'll continue, absolutely. There's going to be no change in the program.
So at least he would have the reassurance that she's not completely gone.
Oh, that's, that's a good point.
You know, that she's, she's at the middle school, still see her sometimes, you know, see the middle school students, and...
And that's something you might want to mention to them, and, and we should as well reinforce, that, hey, you're still going to see Ms. Miller, plenty. But I do think, regardless, I need to speak with the, with the folks who are involved directly and make sure that the transition in the next three weeks is happening, that we're not just, and I'm sure they're not just, you know, our teachers are fantastic, they're not just going to send anybody over the cliff. I think we just need to double down on that, make sure we're doing it more, even more effectively, okay?
Okay, and another question about the, the disabled kids restrained, and is there a difference between how you will restrain a disabled child, student, as opposed to a non, a kid that doesn't have a disability? Like, I was just listening to the...
So, you may, you may, you likely heard...
Where you, the policy that you guys were just discussing.
Right.
Yeah, what is the difference between restraining someone with a disability and someone without a disability?
So you likely heard that a lot of our faculty, including our Youth Safety Specialist, Mr. Harrison at the high school, are being trained in the same restraint practices that our special needs kids are part of, under that umbrella, policy umbrella.
Handle with care.
I'm sorry, I'm trying.
Handle with care, which...
Handle with care, thank you.
Which the focus of that program is de-escalation before restraint, so really trying to avoid actual physical contact and de-escalating.
Since I've been here for four years, and I know I shouldn't be saying things out loud, but we have not had a situation in which we've had to physically restrain.
There he goes again.
All right, well, some of that might happen, but we're fortunate that, that I think we do a decent job trying to be proactive and prevent these things from even...
There are words in the policy that do say, which do talk about students with, in the case of a student with an IEP, "The school district shall attempt to minimize the use of physical restraints through inclusion of positive behavior supports in the student's IEP behavior intervention plan." So there's an attempt in advance to work with a student who may be, may be seen as a student who might need intervention before that might have, have to happen, but there's no, there's no difference in the, the mode, method, or whatever of the restraint or seclusion, but rather just trying harder to deal with the student with an IEP in advance.
All right, well, thank you. That's what I wanted to discuss.
Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you for having me.
It was lovely to meet you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for sitting here so patiently, for so, oh, my goodness, I feel so bad.
Oh, somebody took a pen. Was a pen there.
Thank you, Rob. If there isn't any other public comment, I will move on to my president's report, which I'm going to make super fast. I just wanted to let everybody know that I did go to see the, see David Rubin, our special counsel, represent us before the appeal appellate division. I'm so bad with these legalese things. And it was really kind of fascinating, it was actually in the Supreme Court room in Trenton, which I'd never been in before, so it did kind of have this like, oh, kind of like feel to it. It was kind of cool. The appellate division heard four cases kind of concurrently. They put them all together at the very beginning of their agenda that morning. So I sat, and David, David was the lead counsel in three of those four. There was one separate counsel for Franklin, the Franklin Township Public Schools. David represented us, North Brunswick, bye-bye, good night.
Good night.
Us, North Brunswick, and New Brunswick. And it, it's always fascinating to go and listen to David make his arguments, and to hear the attorneys for the respective charter schools make their arguments, because this was both appeals of Hatika's expansion, and also Central Jersey College Prep, which is in Franklin. And, and then also, the state's attorney is there to represent the commissioner, so listening to their arguments as well. And I continue to be amazed that the state's position and the charter school's position is, yep, any kid, anywhere in the state, can attend any charter school they want, and that district has to pick up the price tag. So I feel the more that we force them into making that point, the more preposterous they look, and the more preposterous they sound, because there's just absolutely no way that the legislature intended that. There's just no way, especially when it's so, the one, the only question that one of the judges asked pertained specifically to that. They didn't seem, they seem, you know, they go, they come out, they say, "We've read everything, we know everything, really only talk to us if you need to," basically, like, we don't really want to hear much, but the one question that they did ask was to David and was pertaining to that issue. They really seemed to want clarification of, "So are you saying that a kid can't attend a charter school then, if they're outside of that geographic boundary?" And David was like, "Thanks for asking. No, that's not what we're saying at all." But that it should follow the same kind of statutory guidelines that there are for kids who do that within districts, right? So if I decide that I want my kid to go to a much larger district where they have the ability to take, you know, 9,000 different, you know, extracurriculars that we don't offer, we can't offer here because of our size, then I can do that, but then I have to work out an arrangement with Edison, or East Brunswick, or wherever I want my kids to go, to pay for that. I can't just decide I'm going to send my kids to school in East Brunswick, or Piscataway, or wherever else. I have to work out an arrangement with that district. And he pointed out also rightfully that sometimes this is contractual, right? We may have something in our contract with the HPEA that says that teachers can allow their students to, or their children, rather, to come with them and attend our schools. That could be negotiated, that's, that could be a negotiation, negotiations item. But that it doesn't, the same rules should apply to charters in this regard that apply to, right, apply to districts. So, that was about the only point where there was a little bit of, a little bit of discussion, and, you know, David kind of got to go a little bit above and beyond the basic facts of our case, which I was glad to see that at least happen. But now that this is all done, four to eight months, we'll wait four to eight months to find out.
They said forty-eight.
Four, no, four to eight, four to eight months to get a written decision. And they said that all four of those written decisions would kind of come out concurrently, so we should, you know, this has been years, so, you know, another four to eight months, you know, is a, is a drop in the bucket. But the good thing that this is coming up so often, David feels that that makes it,